Great, thank you very much and for being here. Our purpose of study sessions is so that we can talk a little bit more in depth about opportunities and school district business and our goal always is to build trust so that we can have efficient decision making with all the information board members need, count the regular board meetings. So this evening's a little unique and much of the event tonight is really about board development. We are going to ask Julie just to share a little update on some budget things, even though I think we're going to move some of the information to the next meeting.
All right, and under district governance and policy, that's exactly what we'll be talking about tonight, is board governance and our policies. And we have representatives from MSBA to help us through a program they call mutual expectations. But before we start that, Julie, you had a couple comments on the budget.
So I will, you having your packet of information about the budget, we'll bring that back to the February 10th work session and then we'll kind of talk through that. We have a lot of work that we still can be doing in the meantime before the board makes any decisions, so it won't really delay us at all by pushing that back. Also, I just wanted to give you a quick update about fee pay because we've had a lot of questions on fee pay from our parents and our community, and that's a program that kind of way went through a big, they split their program in half and half of it's working and half is not. The half that's working is dealing with community, and the half that is not is dealing with every other piece of our district, the activities and all of that. We've changed-
The lunch.
The lunch, activities, lunch, anything else that we have, any kind of fees, anything. So we are really struggling with that. That's a program that we've had for years, it's been really successful in our district, it got sold and it's changed over. It's one of those things that you just don't have a whole lot of control over. It's a big financially, and I don't want to get into it a lot right now, but there's a lot going on behind the scenes that we, if we were to switch to a different program, we have to do for making sure that we're not storing credit cards with another company, we're not doing some of those things that they have the highest security, that they have all those things. We're really working on that if we were to change over. So we're researching that, we're going to try and bring some information back to the board to have some of those changes made simply because we just don't see this coming to an end with fee pay. But it's going to take us a little bit of time to do our own research to make sure that we are doing the correct things, protocols for the district and for our community, make sure that everything is safe and secure, whoever's making payments through our district. So that's where we're at with that. So I know it's a burden on our parents and we're really sorry about that, but we are, we're trying to move forward as best that we can without putting any more people at risk.
Nice, sure. I'm assuming there's other districts going through this.
And we're trying to work with them too to make sure that, you know, where are we all at here and if there's something that we can work together to make sure that we're hitting all of those security points.
I think the number of 31 districts in Minnesota use fee pay.
And it's mostly metro.
Yeah.
So that's just a quick update on that.
And then we're just still maintaining regular communication with the families, I assume?
Okay. We're trying the best that we can.
You are doing awesome, I just feel so good for you.
It's just, we have to go through some of these other pieces before we can source anything else.
Julie, is this affecting revenue from that at all? I mean, what do you think an impact would be?
It doesn't really affect revenue, it's so much as far as how much revenue we're going to get, but it affects if we start getting money through checks and we start getting other sources of revenue, it's a time commitment from all of our staff to try and now count money, deposit money and do all those things we didn't have to previously do. So that's more of so where it's happening.
So you don't think we're losing money out of the cafeteria and all that kind of stuff because now people don't want to deal with it and send lunches and all that? I'm just kind of curious.
I haven't seen that yet.
Okay.
But I've only been back to my office for one day, so I can research that a little bit, so.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Okay, should I give them the good news?
Absolutely.
We're going to move into board development and we have representatives from MSBA, as I said before here, and I would let you introduce yourselves. And because it's board development, all of you administrators can go home.
Look at them smile! They're smiling but they're not moving.
They're waiting for you to say something.
I guess I know I gave me a thought.
I mean, you're welcome to stay, but you can certainly-
They're so dedicated.
They are.
This doesn't feel right.
We're not getting pumped, right?
I can't.
We're getting pumped.
Do you want to get back to the office?
No, it's going to be, what would you do?
Very good.
Maybe we can move our tables also together too.
Sure.
There were enough. Are you sure? Do you think you're going to use that for anymore or?
Well, actually probably both.
Okay.
So maybe just have people like on this corner.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, we'll move down.
Can I stay here?
No, she's going to break that.
Maybe we'll go over there. We do that. So you want to use this part of mine?
I'm just going to go. There you go. Well, I've actually tripped before. I'm going to unplug this and if I need it, I will let-
Sure, that's fine.
We'll just put it to one side.
Well, John Quinones, we are not, so.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, but.
Do you want us to have our name tags?
Yeah, we go down.
We've got a little exercise we'll do here, so.
Okay.
So we'll just introduce ourselves and then we'll work on the name tags, those kinds of things. I'm Katie Clandrew, the Director of Board Development with MSBA, working on my 14th year there. Before that was a school board member and I was trying to decide if I was going to file to run again and was offered this opportunity, so now I just live vicariously through all of you. And so grateful, grateful to be here. I enjoy working with individual school boards as well as Paula and I work on the leadership conference in the summer center as well as the different workshops that are put out, so we have a variety of irons in the fire.
Yes, we do.
Welcome and good evening, thanks for having us tonight. My name is Paula O'Loughlin and I am finishing up my seventh month, seventh month.
Starting.
At MSBA, yes. And before that I was at EMed, the East Metro Integration District for a number of years, doing student programming and professional development, and before that, short time in the classroom. And support Katie in the board development work and then also was a school board member. Served on the Stillwater area Public School Board for one term. So kids are still in the system, we're almost there, we got one as a senior, so we're kind of in the home stretch with one of them, so. But very excited to be here and like Katie said, just being able to support boards and like you said, build trust and that's what it's all about and hopefully tonight we'll be able to have some of those good conversations that will help create, co-create the conditions for the board to work together toward that trust so you can govern and lead efficiently and effectively, so. Okay, so like Katie said, we're going to do an exercise here, you'll see our name tags, we're going to ask, can I have some Sharpies?
Do you usually record your studies at our work sessions?
It's up to you, I'm just asking, just want to, whatever, it's up.
We have two board members that aren't here this evening and we encourage them to listen to the work session. I don't know if anyone else-
Is that, is it supposed to be lit up if it's on?
The bottom half usually has a little red light on, it's just no light at all right now.
I don't know, Jeff, please stop.
He turned, it was on.
It was on before.
I'll let Stacy work with the technology and then I'll give some instructions.
It's going.
Oh, great.
Hi.
All right, so did everybody get a post-it note, post-it pad and then a name tag? So with your Sharpie or another pen if you want to, go ahead please and put your name on, you can fold the card.
I'll use yours and I'll do yours for you.
Just like so, give me a name tent and please put your name on the blank side.
Nickname, first and last.
Nora Parkins, whatever you would like to be called tonight.
That's a tricky question.
Yeah.
All right, so before we get into the exercise, we're going to really work together to co-create the agenda tonight. We really want it to be driven by the board and the topics that you all want to discuss and do a deeper dive into. But before we do that, we're just going to review our norms on the back and seeing if there's any questions, comments, input, revisions that we need to visit. So number one, the competence is in the group. I firmly believe that all the wisdom that you need is in the room and the answers will emerge through really rich discussion and willingness to be vulnerable, put yourselves out there and ask good questions of one another and to listen. And like we tell our students, right, you're likely to get out of it what you put into it. Number two, so trust your fellow board members to have, that there'll be honest, open discussion, all right? So some of the things that a lot of boards face, I believe at the heart of it is relationships and so how do we build those, that trust so we can communicate as effectively as possible? Number three, do not suffer needlessly if, please, you know, if you need to use a restroom or you've been here since, Stacy, what'd you say, since five?
Five, yeah. Four forty-five for me, yeah.
Some of you might need to check on family members, please do what you need to do, if you need to take a call, kindly step outside. Also, if there's, you know, hey, we just need a break, we just need to take a little time out here, please let Katie and I know and we're here to just to be responsive to what you all need. Number four, it's okay to say, I don't know. I know coming from the world of education, often it's hard to say, you know, I don't know the answer to that. But please know that, and Katie and I, you'll hear us say, we don't know, we'll have to do some more research and do our own homework and get back to you, but just know that that's a, that's part of it as well. And then the last one, as Katie said, thank you for being here, both of us being former board members, we know the time, the commitment, the dedication and just the service that you're doing, so thank you for serving our kids, we appreciate it. All right, so with your post-it notes, oh, I should ask though before we go, any questions, comments, objections, changes? Is it okay that we can guide our time for tonight? Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, so on your post-it note, what I'd like you to do is, I want you to be thinking about topics that you want to see discussed tonight. It is your work session, it is your mutual expectations retreat, if you will, and so we really want it to be driven by what you want to talk about. So you can put as many different topics as you'd like and use as many post-it notes as you need to. So maybe, do you have a question about open meeting law? You know, we question about our committees and open meeting law, can we talk about that tonight? Or gosh, you have questions about chain of command and chain of responsibility, not sure if our board is handling it maybe as the best way that we could, can we talk about that tonight? Whatever topic it might be and then we will kind of, Katie will organize them and we'll call out some themes from those and then that will kind of guide our agenda for the evening and discussion. Questions on?
And full disclosure, we will be going around, you'll be able to then introduce ourselves and then you will be reading your topics that you, that you suggested that we talk about today.
And it is 10 to 7, not 10 to 8.
Correct.
Because I looked up there and went, oh my god, how did that happen?
I used that one.
Yeah, I know, then I saw that one, I was like, oh.
Mickey tells me how it works.
Do we want to, are we staying, we're not staying policy focused then, just any topic?
Anything.
Got it.
Anything.
Mm-hmm.
As long as you can read, your mind's worse.
It's one more minute enough for people? All right, it looks like a lot of good content. We'll be done by midnight, no, just kidding. No, eager to hear what everyone has to say. What I'd like us to do now is we're going to go around, if you could please, I know you all know each other, but just introduce yourselves, how long you've been in your role and also share what you wrote down, what you'd like us, what you hope that we can discuss this evening. Can we start with you?
I was on the board for 13 years and then I was off for two and now I'm back, it's my fourth year. I've served as chair and vice chair and clerk, treasurer a number of times. What else, you just want me to tell you what?
Please, yeah.
Okay. In the area of board governance, sometimes it's hard to decide how much I need to know about an issue in the community and then also dealing with what the community expects that I should know. Where, you're on the board, why don't you know this kind of thing? So that was one topic. Do you want all of them?
Please.
The others along the same line, when someone in the community comes and asks you a question, how you answer individually what their concerns are so that they understand that you're speaking with one voice, not as representative of the board. And then our, if a policy is violated, how you actually handle that. We have a policy and violation of policy, but I would like to more discussion.
Okay, great, thank you. And I can collect those too, we'll just save them.
Chicken scratch?
Yeah. Thank you.
Can we think about policy and policy violations? That's for-
Board members, right?
Board members.
Yeah, school board member violation of policy.
All right. Sorry if I'm not spiking right up or right down. You're going to give me full credit, put 17 up there.
It's really 17, it was 13.
It'll be 17.
I think it's 11 and then two.
No, 13.
13 then two.
They were pushing me to stay for 20, that's why I put 17 in there.
She's staying for 20.
Thank you.
I'm Teri Salo, I am the superintendent and in my fifth year here. And a couple of the things that I wrote down, similar to Lee, I think that piece around educating and communicating, both internally but also externally, the roles and responsibilities of a board member and management. Another thing that I wrote down, we're just a discussion and perhaps review and some agreements around communication protocols, both amongst board and administration and also I think board and the community and that kind of comes back to your question about when questions come up from community members, what's the roles, the role of the board's response in that. And then the third thing I wrote down and, you know, it's the title of tonight, right, but that whole notion of mutual respect and building trust, trust built on a common mission and purpose and, you know, that alignment of making sure we're all working toward the same outcomes for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Michael Nelson and I am starting here to, as a school board member, I already am going to be echoing some of what my colleagues have said here. One is to kind of clarify and explore our role in the larger community. So if there's an interest group, say, some examples, we've had concerns about dyslexia or gifted and talented or a PTC has concerns and they reach out to an individual board member, like, when is that really appropriate or when is that, how are we balancing being a listener versus representing, you know, a board? When do we get involved or not? Even recently, we had an event, an altercation in the cafeteria and people reach out to individual board members and we need, I think we need to get some clarity around what happens in that case, how do we redirect and work as a team to get people where they have to be? So that's something I'd like to explore with you, what your thoughts and directions are. To echo a little bit what Dr. Salo said, maybe it's a side note, but policies and protocols and how we get consistent about that. So when we have a question, who do we copy on an email? When we go to a school, who do we notify and how do we use that to build trust with each other, with our admin team? No surprises sort of thing. Do we need to work on that more or clarify any of that? Government versus management, I think is a little bit what you were talking about, that we have to be really careful and I need to do more work on what is my big picture governance role versus getting in the weeds and managing and I think that's something we always struggle with as board members, but we're revisiting. And another thing I'm wondering if you would address for us is just this big word accountability in a few ways and one is certainly as board members, we have accountability to our taxpayers. What that means and how we best serve students, might have, people might have differing opinions, both within the school district and outside of the school district, but how to look at that. And then accountability in terms of how we work as a team. Our role is not, how do we keep an eye on things? Of course, the only person that we're responsible for is superintendent, she's responsible, you know, for everybody else, but how we make sure, I just feel like I need more exploration on how do we make sure we're working as a team, not as a, don't make a mistake or a gotcha accountability, do you know what I mean? And I struggle with that sometimes as I'm learning, so. I just find that both within the district and the board and then outside with our community, that's a big word and sometimes I think we define it differently based on what we're doing and I just wanted some clarity around that. And then just kind of echoing that, I think superintendent relations too, just to remember that from what I've learned through your sessions is we're all on the school board together, it's not superintendent and the board members, she's just not fully incorrect and so I'd like to just kind of explore how that might work or how we can reinforce that. And I have a social media question, how is it appropriate to not use or not use social media when you're a school board member? So, that was maybe too many post-it notes. Sorry, I should have left.
No, that's great, thank you.
My name is Jonathan Drews, I too am just starting year number two, serving my first term, continuing to learn the role, learn what it's all about and thoroughly, thoroughly rewarding time and work. The notes that I had down that haven't already been mentioned, maybe along with, along with the theme of accountability, I think to some extent accountability to one another and accountability within our board. Anytime you say the word attendance, you're always by definition preaching to a choir because you're always talking to the people who are here. And so I'm just curious about norms and protocols around that kind of stuff and really it's about accountability to ourselves as a board. It's already been mentioned, but I have, I too, you get the questions that are from community members who do think that we have a role that's management more than government, more than governance, excuse me, and again, dealing with that, those, those public issues and those public questions. And I know there's been some discussion with our community engagement committee about trying to create some community engagement with our board, I'm curious if there are ideas around that. And I think for me, I kind of summed it up, the last thing I wrote down was I would really, really like it if as a group, where we're way for us kind of as a team just to find our groove, to really get into a group where we all feel like we're working toward one end and working together, even if we have differences of opinion along the way, because that should be the way it works.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's a lot of the same. I'm Stacy, I'm in my 10th year on the board. I had something around communications and email protocols, I had something around attendance and notifying the chair and just that accountability piece. I have something around building visits and what's appropriate protocols and how to handle that. I have something on social media and what's the role, you know, when are we a private citizen and when are we actually a school board member as it relates to social media? And then I have something around the definition of public data and this was something that was told to me, like, I think it was, I don't think it was Lee, I think it was Eric that actually told me that, or Tom Anderson, one of the two, like, the first thing, or, I don't know, somebody told me, like, anything you said on this table is open to public, public data. So, is that really true? I don't know. But what is really public data, the use of electronics, you know, if we use our own personal electronic devices, what, you know, is that issue? And so I guess I just had a question about that. I don't really know. Exactly. Was that kind of something? Is that true?
Thank you.
These are like scratch. Okay. So I had a couple of questions. First of all, oversight and governance, the actual definition of it by the MSBA and where it stops and ends as far as that oversight. Oh, sorry, my name is Mary France, I've been on the board for, this will be my fourth year. It's not the only education board that I've sat on though, so this is the first four year for Prior Lake and I do have a little bit of a, what do you call it, because I've actually sat on the Minnesota Data Privacy Act Policy Board, so. So anyways, so oversight and governance, you know, so I asked a question and somebody says, well, I'm not going to answer that for you because it's management and it tends to not really be consistent, so it's a little confusing to me about what is supposed to be and not be. I had a question about community engagement, kind of the same question as every- Exactly. Is that true?
Thank you.
These are like scratch.
Okay.
Okay. So I had a couple of questions. First of all, oversight and governance. The actual definition of it by the MSBA and where it stops and ends as far as that oversight. Oh, sorry, my name is Mary France, I've been on the board for, this will be my fourth year. It's not the only education board that I've sat on though, so this is the first four year for Prior Lake. And I do have a little bit of a, what do you call it? Because I've actually sat on the Minnesota Data Privacy Act Policy Board, so. So anyways, so oversight and governance, you know, so I ask a question and somebody says, well, I'm not going to answer that for you because it's management. And it tends to not really be consistent, so it's a little confusing to me about what is supposed to be and not be. I had a question about community engagement, kind of the same question as everybody else. When we have community engagement, we tend to invite the same people, we talk to the same people, and therefore we don't get a good diverse feedback. And sometimes we find out after something's happened that, you know, they weren't paying attention. Because let's face it, with everything that's going on in people's lives, they're not really here. And then when they, when they do show up, sometimes we've already voted on something. And they, you know, say, well, why wasn't I told about this, that sort of thing. So getting some insight into that. Insight into transparency, I think this was brought up before. I've been in situations where, for instance, I found out what was happening in the, in the school in a big decision because the city council got briefed, but the board here didn't get briefed. And one time I was actually down at the courthouse and I was told by a friend of mine who happens to be a judicial officer, oh, I'm sorry, you guys are getting sued. I didn't know, you know, that sort of thing. And I'm on the board here, so instead of saying, I don't know, I go back and I ask. But where are we supposed to be informed? And also to kind of, you know, given some recent circumstances, when can we make information that's communicated, let's say, to board members? When, let's say, it doesn't involve, let's say, the name of a minor or something like that. But can we put a confidential statement on there so people can't take emails and copy them out? Is that allowed? You know, the consistency with the, with the definition has been a little not the same. But it would be nice to be able to, you know, be able to discuss something before it was released to the public, that sort of thing, if that's allowed, that would be great. I had a question about agenda setting, what is the norm for setting agendas for, let's say, study sessions? Or what's supposed to be discussed? And that kind of also goes in line with oversight and governance. What should we be putting on the agenda? What shouldn't we be putting on the agenda? And then I want to talk a little about superintendent reviews. What information are we supposed to have going into that process? What information is the norm? What should we be getting from the superintendent? What should we be getting from, let's say, the three sixties on the superintendent to allow us to give accurate reviews? What should she be telling us? What we should be telling her? That would help. And then I did have a question about the policy violations and our current policy two oh four and the way it's been implemented as well as executed. And comparing that to other policies that other school districts have put in and the steps and things like that. And what is the proper way to do that and the legal way to do that?
I'm not, I'm not a, full of tips, sorry. I have not seen a policy two oh four, I mean, I didn't study that, so I don't have that to be able to comment on for you.
We actually were supposed to discuss it tonight, so.
Okay, so you guys will discuss it later or?
I think, I think what we could do beforehand is kind of talk about the concept, because that was with the policy and policy violations that we brought up. Depending on the same thing. Because depending on how late we go, we may not get to all our policies tonight. We may have to suspend them till the next meeting. The policy that we would start with tonight is, makes sense to me, is two oh eight, which is the adoption and development of policy.
So it's a policy policy?
Yeah, how to, how to write a policy or what our policies are, policy. If we could get that known.
I wasn't specifically familiar with that policy.
It's the, but it's the underlying policy behind these, so yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else that came in by the time while you heard the others talking?
I think we talked about mutual respect, is that up there somewhere? I mean, respecting each other's viewpoints and wanting to forward.
I think under Teri's. Mutual respect.
Okay.
Yep. Well, I, the one thing I tail back on that is on the mutual, well, just previous boards, like, the conversation sometimes goes to previous boards and what previous boards have done and voted on and what shouldn't have happened or something. And I guess maybe have a discussion around, you know, what's appropriate with that. What is that? Sorry.
Yeah, I guess I interpret that as occasionally we'll be, we'll be talking about a topic and I think sort of throwing, for lack of a better word, the previous board, the decision they made two, three, four, six years ago, kind of under the bus and saying, you know.
They shouldn't have done that.
They shouldn't have done this, but they did. And now we're kind of stuck with it. Is that sort of what you're getting at? So what's the proper way to respect the work of the folks who preceded us? Even if we might disagree.
It wasn't, we've always done it this way therefore.
All right. Anything else?
Oh, I'm sure we'll come up with some more when we're talking.
It's pretty fluid. And I just want to clarify, I know you have already had a long evening and potentially have an even longer evening. So what kind of time commitment are you looking to tonight? So we're clear on what you would like or want to do. We started at six forty.
Most of the time we try and the work sessions to be done by nine. That would be as long as we, I think we'd want to go unless somebody has a need or feels a desire to go longer.
I'll go longer, I mean, to be honest, because to get this stuff, whatever it takes.
And we don't want to shorten your presentation or the discussion.
We'll pay attention to the time and we'll just check in.
Where we'd stop probably is maybe we would not talk about individual policies. But I guess I envision that the information and the discussion that we have here will help us as we go through our policies.
Right.
Right.
To be respectful, do you have an obligation? Do you, I mean, how far of a drive do you have to get home by morning?
Doesn't matter. Doesn't it?
My goal is to drive to home by midnight.
Oh, wow.
I know we're gonna come back to policies, but I think it all kind of comes back to the umbrella of how can we do our policies in a way that shores up our trust with each other? And do you know what I mean? How can we use that going forward in our policies to address some of these issues so that we do have more trust among each other with our admin team than for us? That sort of thing.
Well, I hope that, go ahead.
And there, I mean, we're not going to rework our policies and we're not going to throw them on and start over. But there may be some changes we want to make because it is a different board. So to have this discussion, I believe, will help us if we want to tweak anything or there's some statement we don't want to have in there or we want to add.
Right. So hopefully this pre discussion will help in reviewing that, so.
And I think two oh eight is a good place to start, because as I said, I call that the policy policy. It talks about how we will manage our policies. Have to just kind of basically decide if it's going to be on the three-year cycle or what, how are you going to do it? So that'd be a good place to start.
All right. So the first thing I would like to do is talk with the board about the five stages of board development. And you all may have seen this before. And being a model that's been around for a while doesn't make it any less effective. Sometimes people say, well, that goes way back to, yep, you know, but it's basic. And so like I said, it doesn't make it any less effective. So I will start here with that. Moving around. This is a white one, right? Okay, is it?
It is now.
It is now.
As long as that's a dry erase, you're fine.
Yes. Okay.
Put the Sharpies away.
Yes. Yeah, the flat ones, keep them away. All right, so when we talk about the board governance, oh, I'm sorry, the five stages of board development. You have people, the, our newest board members are starting in their second year. So you must have had elections twenty eighteen, right? Okay, but that also means now, this year you'll have elections for the other half, right? Okay. So when we talk about the five stages of board development, you're going to notice they all, they all rhyme, which is really convenient for those of us that present that to you, because it's easy to remember. But don't take the, like, the second stage is storming. That sounds really negative, and it doesn't have to be, and I'll explain it a little bit better. Okay, so I just don't want you to take that as a negative, all right? So in the first stage is forming. This is when you have a change in your board or in your staff that affects how your board functions. So it could be new school board members, could be a new superintendent, could be a new administrative assistant. Because that all functions how you're going to communicate. Every administrative assistant has a different way of taking minutes and putting that out there and then also communicating. And it might be, well, this is the way we've always done it, but there's still their own way of doing it. So it's something you have to learn and get used to and then ask for, if you need clarification or something. So then everybody can understand how everybody works, okay? In that forming stage, it's important to slow down and not just throw people in the deep end and say, well, nobody slowed down for me, right? Learn, just learn how to lead. And is that a good way, a good leadership, right? So we need to slow down and explain to people why and how we do things. And in doing that, a person understands, so your regular board meetings are usually on Mondays? Okay? And so when do you get the support materials for you to study and read?
Thursday or Sunday.
Usually by Thursday?
Thursday noon.
Thursday by noon, okay. So as a board member, you learn when those meetings are going to be, what usually, what kind of time maybe is going to look like for us to study and be ready? Because when we come to a board meeting and we haven't studied, it becomes obvious in that you're asking questions that are very well probably in the materials. And so you want to make sure that you slow down, but you don't want to slow down your meeting even more because you haven't come prepared, okay? Because it really does slow down your meeting, right? But slowing down enough that we can explain the process and everybody understands the decisions they're making, okay? So the next one is storming. Like I said, it tends to have a negative sound to it, but it doesn't have to be. It's really about learning about each other's, the group dynamics, leadership styles, how we come prepared, the kind of questions we ask. What's important to me versus Stacy or Teri or, you know, how, what those conversations are going to look like? And as you learn these and work through it and start moving on to the next stage, it's because you are now understanding what's important to one another and you're really, oh, yeah, I bet tonight Lee's going to have a lot to say around this because this tends to be important to her, something that she knows really well and wants more information or whatever. So the storming stage can sound really negative and sometimes it is, right? But it's really learning about those, the group dynamics. And then when any one person leaves, it changes the group dynamics again. Even though you replace them or maybe you don't replace them right away for whatever reason, it changes your group dynamics. As we're working around the circle here, so you see forming, storming, what we're working on building is trust, okay? So we're learning who each other, what the process is like, who we all are and what's important to us. And then we have forming, storming, norming, okay? This is where we've been able to put enough trust out there but also be vulnerable, okay? You're being vulnerable because that's how trust develops. Not just because we're alike, but also because I put myself out there a little bit. Maybe it's a little bit at a time, right? Whether it's in conversation or beliefs or sharing whatever it is. And then is what I said taken out of context? Or is it used against me? Or is it blown up? Or is it a good discussion and appreciated and we may not agree, but yet we can still have a good trusting relationship with one another, okay? So forming, storming, norming, building trust, putting out some vulnerability there. And we all have to do it. And it's hard work. It's hard work. If it was easy, we probably wouldn't have a job, right? Because people would just trust one another and all would be good. And they wouldn't have to have conversations around how we are working together, right? So working on building trust, forming, storming, norming, and then performing. Now, this is where a board's been together a little while, right? And they've really learned about each other's choices, preferences, what's important to them. Also, you learn what buttons can be pushed, right, to make things happen. If you think about any close relationship you've had, whether it's significant other or a child or a parent, in that, especially if it's a brand-new relationship, let's say it's, we start dating, right? And so you're just kind of learning about one another in that, do you like Italian food, right? Do you like Mexican food? Do you like to drive? You can't sit in the back because you get carsick, right? You know, those kinds of things, you kind of learn about those things. But then as we get into this stage, we find out that more about that person and what their real preferences are. And again, looking at working on figuring out what those things are and, you know, what those buttons are that we can push or things, topics we start away from, right? Because we don't want, we don't want to upset people. But again, there, you're building trust and you're having to put out a little vulnerability and more and more along the way. Now, as a school board, as you're doing this, when you get to this stage, what can happen is, all right, we know what's important to one another, I know what it takes to be a school board member, it's going to show up on Thursday, we're going to meet on Monday, and Melissa's important to Lee, so she's going to want to talk about it, the rest of us don't have much to say about it, we're going to vote and it'll be done, right? But then we're moving too fast for our community, okay? It's almost like we can read our minds. So my husband and I, we are on our second year of being empty nesters. And it's super quiet in our house because we have, don't have a lot of reason to talk to one another unless a specific topic comes up, you know? So we're, we're eating, we get up, we do the dishes, we, you know, we turn on Wheel of Fortune, you know, all this kind of stuff. And so we move really quickly. And so when our kids come home now, they're like, it is so quiet here, you know? You say, well, it's because it's just kind of, you know, we get into a routine, we understand what's going on. So looking at how you're performing or speeding up, and so you want to take time to purposely slow down and explain the process. So it could be that we're making a decision tonight, but we've met twice on it. We've gotten information, we've gotten reports, we've gotten presentations by staff. And sometimes the community shows up when we're going to vote on it, right? They haven't been privy to the rest of that. But they have been because it's open, but sometimes they don't realize it, okay? That of what's going on, and then all of a sudden there's a buzz in the community and people say, you know, oh my gosh, I better get there tonight. And so they come to the board meeting and then you guys have been working on this for nine months. You're ready to vote. And then people want to start asking questions or they want you to see more conversation from you, right? And that you're showing it's important, so it's okay to slow down, explain the process, maybe hit the highlights, and those things that you know are probably of major concerns, okay? And so slow down a little bit. Forming, storming, norming, performing, and deforming. So now in this next election, if for whatever reason we have new school board members this next year, whether because somebody chooses not to run, they run and they didn't get the votes, right? They move. Or for whatever reason, your board changes. And so it's important to put a little closure on things if you can. So last meeting of the year, we might say, I don't know who's up for election, but Stacy, you know, we didn't always agree, but I appreciate you always came prepared. And we were able to have some good conversation, we didn't always agree on things. But then, so putting that kind of bow and wrapping it up on the end because that next board meeting, that first Monday in January, you're going to be where? Forming, because you're going to have somebody new there, okay? Now, sometimes this happens in the middle of the year because somebody has to leave or for whatever reason. But that next meeting, no, we're forming. We got to start over, start with those new people and keep working forward. Now, sometimes people say, oh, I've been coming to meetings for two years, you know? Okay, but they haven't been a school board member for two years, right? And it is different. It's different being on this side of the table. The level of responsibility, what you feel on your shoulders, that heavy responsibility of your community, you put a lot of that in there and communicating with your community, letting them know what your job is, those kinds of things. I remember that as a school board member, even the next day, I was like, I must go to every committee meeting there is throughout the whole sc- you know, I was ready to just do everything. Well, I needed to be um, be able to set boundaries and um make what works um for me. But then also being able to focus on my board work and understanding what that is, okay? So now I like to ask a board where you see that you are and all of these areas are necessary, okay? Somebody say, oh, we skipped over it, really, you didn't really, you didn't learn about Peters, people's leadership styles or did you just move quickly, right? Some boards, they get up here and even here and they're really clicking along and something happens, trust is broken, right? Or um so- something happens and it, things change and then we move back to here. We have to then now work on building trust again, okay? Um, some boards get stuck here and then um something happens in the district. Sometimes it can be unfortunately something very tragic. Or it's a big change of some really hard work that we have to do, maybe it's hiring. A superintendent or whatever it is and then we have to put all that aside and be able to work well together and make this happen. And then you decide, are we gonna start rehashing that or are we just gonna, you know, decide that um we agree to disagree? Some people don't like that term, but we agree to disagree and but we wanna function and do things and focus on board work for our students, okay? So where do you think you are as a board? Sometimes different people on the board have a different idea of where, where you are, just because we all have different perspectives.
I'll go first.
Jonathan, yes.
I think we are storming and beginning ever so slightly to move to norming.
So in here?
Yeah.
Okay, it's reasonable.
And I, and I say that, cause I do feel like uh as through our first year. I think Michael and I and Enrique as well, we're, we're really learning, learning the role, learning the people. And it is different from this side of the world. Just it absolutely is. They getting to know each other's styles is happening. I think this, there are seeds of additional um trust starting to germinate, right? Um in a good way and I think we are understanding each other's priorities a little bit. I'm not sure, at least for us noobs, I'm not sure we're getting vulnerable yet.
Yeah.
Did you just say noobs?
Noobs, for us noobs, we're still noobs, until somebody else gets elected, we're noobs.
You're the newbies.
So I, that's, that's my take, that's where I put us.
Super.
I would just add to that, that we also hit a couple of big issues coming out of the gate our first year. Boundaries took an enormous amount of time. Yep. On enrollment issues and budget issues. Um very extended process to get more community involved as, as the issues grew. And so I think that took sort of the head down work and took away a little bit at the time we might have used.
Right.
Doing this.
So where would you think you're?
I would agree with Jonathan that, you know, we've, we've in between all of that have worked on the storming and we're headed to norming.
Okay.
But I'm a noob.
That's okay. You just dissed him.
I did, just left me hanging.
No!
You left him hanging, no, he went like this and you didn't give him the high five back. No, I wasn't saying in your verbage. He went like this and you. Okay, um, anybody else? Any other thoughts? Mary?
I was gonna say, I think we're between forming and storming.
In here?
I think we're past the storming where you put the little star.
We're past it?
No, you put the star after storming.
You think we're more right here?
Right.
Okay, any thoughts you can share around that or?
Um, yeah, I just, you know, I'm, I'm in my fourth year and I'm not quite sure we ever got past forming. With the, you know, there was a, a tremendous amount of um distrust, innuendo, assumptions, things like that. That um were never really allowed to mature. Um, and I think that in the past, probably just in the past couple of months, we've actually had. Some of really good discussions at the study session where the, a little bit more open and so that's why I don't think we're at the storming phase yet or past it. But I think that we can get there.
True, good, good, all right.
Go, go ahead, Debbie.
I, 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 I'm trying to, can you tell me the definition of anything forming and storming? Cause forming were brand new, we're kinda trying to figure each other out, storming were.
It's more about the group dynamics, who takes leads on different things, um.
Learned each other.
I, I think it depends on the situation, to be honest, I mean, I can see Mary's side on certain things and then I can actually see moving towards. So I, you know, we're somewhat in there, I mean, you know, on, on some, yeah, I mean. Uh you know, I would say too, that the last couple of months, there's been um. To Jonathan's point about groove a little bit, I think we've kind of gotten a little groove, um you know, whether the opinions are different or not, I think. You know, for the most part, people respect what each other's saying, we can make the decision, the decision's the decision and then we can move on. You know what I mean? So I do think we're, we're moving that way, um. So yeah, I mean, it's, it, you know, but situations come up and sometimes we can go back into, I would say, Mary's thing before storming and then.
Right.
So it's kind of a zigzag effect, I guess.
Kinda moving back and forth.
Take a couple steps, then go a couple steps forward, a couple steps, a step back.
Yep.
So I would say it's somewhere in that area.
Okay.
Thanks for asking for another bit.
I know, but.
Because I was struggling a little bit with where that was gonna be, storming isn't so clear to me.
I think she's right, that's the name that's confusing.
The name can be.
That's confusing, yeah.
I just have to say that I wish there was a way to, I'm a people person, I do better when I know people better.
Yeah.
And we're not really allowed to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, that is.
You know, everything's in the public eye, which is fine, I'm not suggesting we have some deep, dark little.
Right.
You know, gathering, but um I would feel better if I could get to know people better, I think we would move around that circle a lot quicker.
That'd be a great thing to add to the list.
You know, I mean, I know we can have a retreat, um which is great, you know, we go to the MSBA convention, that's great, um and the trainings, but. It, it's just nice to get to know where people are coming from and, you know, why are they thinking the way they think, you know? And I had the opportunity to, to get to that point with previous boards because for, I don't know, two or three terms. We pretty much didn't change any memberships, so after, when you're with people that long at public meetings, you, you do get to know them.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and this time around, there's, there's been more change, so it's, you kinda wanna know where people are coming from. And so when I say all that, I struggle as to where we're at, because I think, as Stacy said, we kinda go back and forth, we're probably still in the bottom part of the circle. But we kinda go back and forth like depending on the topic. Uh so I guess I'm saying, I'd say between the star and between storming, I think we're still kind of in that area, yeah.
And we have seen over the last, I don't know if I'm gonna say eight to ten years, that it's changed and that board members are turning over.
So are superintendents.
And superintendents, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's the average time of everybody serving everything.
They used to stay really long, but now I think the average is like, I don't know, I remember.
Three.
Oh, was it three?
I was gonna say like three, four.
Twenty.
Five.
So when you see that board member get forty years, I was just like, amazing.
Oh, I think we all were like. Yeah, no, that was pretty bizarre.
But interesting when you talked about deforming, I mean, I think at one point, years ago, our board was in the performing stage. And then our superintendent left and all of our top administrators left. We were definitely deforming, it was.
Yeah.
Hard then to pull everybody back together and, you know, the mindset was, everybody can be replaced, we can make this move forward and we did.
Right.
But, so I know what you're, I know what you mean by that, I mean, that happened here.
Yeah, deciding it's not all gonna fall apart.
Yep.
How we're gonna move forward, yeah, absolutely. Uh when I was on the board, we had a board member pass away, I mean, how you might manage that? Cause you're definitely here, you know, you're grieving and then you're bringing somebody new on, you know, so. Lot of those things can, can really affect um how you're able to communicate with one another, so. Any other thoughts on this, anybody?
I, the, the one observation that I have is I, I think no matter where you are, there's the potential. Every two years, you go right back to forming.
There is the potential, absolutely.
No matter how far through the process you get, you have another, another election. And depending on what happens, you, you're starting over.
Could be.
It's good. With the, with the increase in turnover, it's harder to move through the stages.
Well, and even, um so Lee, you said you were on for quite a while, went off and then now you're back on, so.
Lot of change.
You know, you can't hop back on, I think it's just gonna be the same as it was before, so definitely different.
She's gotta deal with Michael now.
I wanted to kinda touch on what you talked about, about the communities and how, when the board gets to a certain phase. You know, cause we experienced that even in the position that we're in because the discussions and the community rarely shows up to these meetings. But then when we do go into the, the, the board to vote and all of a sudden, it's, it's a, a topic of interest. It's an incendiary topic or something like that, I mean, there's, there's always that. Credibility issue with the board, well, they're just gonna push this through, they're not listening to us, you know, all that kinda stuff. And I, I like the way you described it, I'm wondering how boards combat that and how they deal with it. Without going through an entire board session of regurgitating all the discussions, who agreed to what, who didn't agree. How, how, how does that work before, is there any magic, you know, formula?
Right, and I don't know, I mean, I guess, I know you guys worked on this topic my, last year, I understand is boundaries. So and I was, I mean, that's not something you just figured out in one night, right? I mean, that was a process and, but then when are people gonna show up, right? The most people.
Yeah.
People will show up along the way.
Yeah.
And so then it's okay to say, we've been working on this for however long, year and a half, nine months, whatever. And here was the process, we had discussions along the way. As long as they, you know, they were all posted and open and um, and we've had great discussion. And so you might not see a lot here tonight, but that's because we've done that along the way. And then again, hitting some of the highlights, one of the main concerns we heard was this, you know, and a couple of those things. But then, um, cause we had the same thing going when I was on the board and then the chair said, and tonight, now we're here to vote. You know, kinda like, you gotta come along to these things now. We also were very clear when our community members would ask us about it, say, well, you should come to the meetings. That's an interesting perspective, have you shared that? You should come to the meetings, at least listen, right? And see and hear the conversation that we're having and so they can see it's not just something you show up, you show up for.
But Jenny, you brought up a good point though, and um in business world, we always do this when we come to, let's say. Uh a corporate board or an executive decision, you always put the pros and the cons. And you try to address them so the, the community or whoever the listening public is know now, this is much more technical, obviously, discussion. And we expect people to know the terms that we're using, I think is the confusing part too. But have you seen boards actually come to that stage and, and put up a PowerPoint that basically says, okay, here's what we discussed? Here's the feedback we received, just to kinda review it and let people know? Or, or does that only come when you think there's going to be? You know, obviously, boundaries are always sensitive, they're, they're personal, you know, so you're never gonna please everybody. But is, is that something you've seen work in that type of situation?
Well, again, it's how much time do you wanna now dedicate to it again? And you have people that are not showing up, right? And now tonight, you're gonna show up, so now we have to spend an hour and a half on this because you didn't wanna show up, right? So you gotta balance that and it depends on what it is in your community, so.
And you know, I, I do think, as you talk about that, Mary, that, I, I'm thinking about Julie's budget conversations. Because almost every time we have one of those discussions, she's, she lays out the entire year. We're gonna do this, 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 this and all of the steps and we sort of review the steps we did and we look ahead to the next things that are coming. And as, as where appropriate as a template, that idea is something that could be used for other. Decisions or other presentations, cause a lot of them we do see two or three times or more. But we don't necessarily always review them or in the meeting where we are taking a vote. To review our process that we use to get there, I think we do sometimes and other times.
Construction, the entire process, you know, we started with that exact same template.
Yep.
Even the way we do board study sessions, I mean, I think that's a really important way, you know, we didn't have it up tonight, but to show, you know, here is. Here are five areas that we look at tonight specifically, we're gonna be reviewing this piece and this piece and this piece.
To the bottom.
Yeah. And Lee, you were good during the boundaries example, every time we got together, especially in a formal work meeting, she would say. So this is the third time we've done this, we had two study sessions, we added a third study session for more community and what we did this, we did this. So to Mary's point, I mean, I think that brought, if ever someone was there, they had heard that. We had come that far and put how many extra hours in beyond when we had originally scheduled, because we were supposed to vote in like October and we got.
Well, great idea, it's a little give people updates along the way of here's where we are in the process.
I, I will say, by the time that vote came, I think the board really wanted to make that vote by the time, we felt like we had talked it to death, but even the community is like, okay.
Yeah.
We, you know, it's, we know, you've, you've definitely given us plenty of time, I mean, I had people that I didn't, didn't vote the way, I didn't vote the way they wanted me to and they're like, it's time to vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and so I think it was somewhat painful at times, but it was painful for everybody, but you know, I would, had to be done and I think.
Right.
They felt hurt.
And then at some point, we have to vote.
You have to vote, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yep, all right, any other thoughts or questions around this one? Okay, let's see the next piece. So for those of you, um so Michael and Jonathan and is it Enrique that you mentioned that is? Okay.
Yeah.
This is new since you went to phase one, you just rolled this out. So participants that uh were in phase one cohorts at the leadership conference have a chance to see, see this. And as we've been kinda reviewing it, just a few other districts outside of the new. Board members have seen it, so you agree to hear your feedback and, and take a deeper dive into this. So when we talk about board governance and we talk about what our role is, right, as board members, what the superintendent's role is. And so we laid this out in this visual, really highlighting what the role of the board in terms of what does that governing look like? Okay, so that evaluation, all right? We know that the board only hires and evaluates one person, that is the superintendent, right? Um board is responsible, we talked about accountability, we'll talk more about the accountability, but to, to the outdoors, right? Um you are the ones that are establishing your strategic plan, parameters, okay? You're getting contracts, is that, so when is the last time you did your strategic plan, are you guys on that?
November twenty eighteen.
Okay, okay, so and is that something that you feel is a foundational guiding document for all of your meetings? All of the, kinda sets the stage for revisiting it?
We see, I bet we see it in almost every meeting, at least once.
Excellent, okay, and do you feel like too, the community is, also has pretty good working understanding of, of a strategic plan and can articulate goals and?
Yeah, I mean, I think so, I mean, we have a large group of people come together, like a hundred and fifty people review that thing, so, I mean.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty people, I think about thirty of them are administration, but again, that kinda goes to the community engagement. We tend to get the same people over and over and over again.
I wouldn't say that on that, there are a lot of people I did not know on that one.
There was about five or six people that I invited that didn't even know about it beforehand.
And we had a comprehensive invitation process to the entire committee, we didn't have a task force, we open adopted anybody who wanted to attend.
So I think there's a, I, we, we kinda have this.
I've been going to these things for ten years, it wasn't.
So we had, we're, we're kinda going back into one of our little patterns here on this event.
Well, I'm just saying, it wasn't.
I think, I think everybody's right, okay? And this is something I think we all need to find once in a while, um inevitably in our community and I think probably in most communities. You have a limited number of people who take a vested interest in getting involved and listen and pay attention. And when you invite them, they notice the invitation and they show up. And so inevitably, Mary's right, sometimes it's a lot of the same folks because they're the folks who are engaged. And I do think we could try to find other ways to engage some other folks, but that's really difficult. And I don't think you can fault the people who set up the event for who chose to attend. We can continue to improve our ability to out, to have some outreach and invite some other folks that we think are community leaders who want to be involved. But I think, I, I would like it, this is one of these little things, I feel like I'm at home with something that my wife and I always just decide to bicker about. Whenever it comes up, when, when we talk about that and, um, let's move on.
To, to answer your question, I do feel like the community, we, we've made huge attempts to make them aware of our strategic plan. Not only the involvement and, and resetting it and pulling it off the shelf, but on our website, in communications, in newsletters that come from the district or the superintendent, uh, in columns in the newspaper. I don't know that the community is always aware that we're saying, here, it's in your face. Don't miss it. This is our strategic plan. And we're addressing, you know, step three of our strategic plan here. But I do feel like we're pretty blatant, maybe we could do more, but it kind of is the front lead piece and everything that we sent out, I would say.
Well, pretty intentional.
Yeah, I mean, people have to want to learn something too. I mean, they have to want to come. And you can't make them look at something and then come. And we did open it up to anybody in the community that wanted to come. I'm of the group that our kids are all out of school, done with school. Almost everybody I know supports the schools, but do they pay attention on a daily basis? No. They call me if they wanna know something about what's going on in the school, but did they know about this community engagement thing? No. But did they wanna go? No. They're not, they're on to other things now. So it's hard to make sure everybody knows if they choose not to. I mean, they're, they're just not going to.
When we, when we do any kind of presentation, whether it's a board presentation or if I'm with staff or if I'm in the community doing presentations, that strategic plan is the first slide that we show. And then we try to be really intentional about if tonight or today or this meeting is going to be about X. Here's the strategic direction. Here's the priority work that it aligns to. So, so the intentionality of the use of that document as the driving force in what we do, I think is set up and I think it's one of those things that I never underestimate and I do it every time. Every single meeting that I convene, I say, here's our agenda and this is specific to the strategic direction and this priority work.
And you get teams for it because she's so good at it, I would say. Like the mission leads everything.
Well, our job as leaders.
And I don't mean it in a bad way. I say you are so dependable about leading with what our big work is.
Because we have to be the ones to connect the work for our community. So that they understand if we're looking at doing X, it's because we have set it as a priority under the specific strategic direction.
No, and it really sounds like just from what you're describing, that it really is that North Star, right? It's, it's what's driving you. It's what's setting that vision. And, you know, to connect to something that someone hits up there about in terms of kind of, you know, finding that balance of how much do we look to the past? And, and yes, it's important to know our history and, and know what came before us. But the analogy I like to use with the strategic plan is, I've never seen a district's strategic plan that is not aspirational and that is not forward-thinking and forward-moving, right? And so while it's important, yes, where we need to kind of check our, our rearview mirrors and make sure that, you know, we kind of know where we're at, uh, to stay on course. How much of the work that we're doing is, is that forward trajectory? And so it's great to hear that, that strategic plan because that is really going to be the, the bedrock for your community and to, to help them understand. And help them understand your role in terms of how does the board, what is your interface with the strategic, strategic plan? Because it's not in the minutia of executing and implementing and all of that. But it is making sure that Terry and her team are making sure that those accountability factors, that the outcomes, all those questions that need to be, and, or asked and answered, excuse me, of, of your team. So that again, the community can, can see that yes, every discussion that they're having leads back to this because this is what we have committed to for our students. And that every decision and every discussion is purposeful. It has meaning. We're not here, um, you know, just talking about things that are kind of nice to talk about. All of these are leading to, to that, to the one final point to, to serve our kids. So, um, for boards that, and it sounds like your board is very much using that strategic plan as a mechanism in your culture really to drive all of the, all of the work that you're doing. And so maybe that is another tool that you can use with your community to help engage them to, to know the work that you're doing and how to bring them along. So with the school board governing and then underneath you're gonna see the superintendent manages, okay? So in addition to the school board doing the evaluations, establishing and adopting, underneath then is the managing, the superintendent's role of developing those plans and the procedures and the staff. Implementing that and then monitoring it, okay? So policies, right? So when I was on the board, I think I served on the policy committee all, all four of my years. And we would, you know, we'd have the discussion about discipline, health, policy, dress code, whatever it might be. But then in terms of the, what that monitoring looked like, what the actual day-to-day, um, how that was kind of boots on the ground, how that executed, um, not our role, right? So that's, that's superintendent and his or her team and administrators to, to manage. So we put all this in terms of yes, delineating that there is a, is a divide, but also recognizing that there needs to be a very intentional, purposeful partnership, right? Just like you said, I think you, Michael, said it, that as a school board, yes, as an ex officio, uh, you don't have a vote, but vote, but you're still very much on, on the board and it's a cohesive one, one team. And that really, um, the, the goal is to, to work together so that you're supporting what's in the middle, right? And that's each and every student. And I would just add to just the community engagement. I think sometimes it can be a both and. I totally agree with what you said. And I know in our community, we had a lot of families who, they were working second and third shift. Or they didn't have daycare, childcare. Language was a barrier. Transportation was a big barrier. So like you said, what are those other ways that we can put the onus on us to make sure that we're reaching out to our community members? So that everybody can be engaged and have a voice on the table?
Can I ask you something? You just mentioned something about a policy committee. Is that standard? Do, do, we, we don't have that, do we?
We used to have a, back in history, we used to have a policy committee that was part of the board. There were two or three board members on a policy committee. And that changed to become a, a committee of the whole. So the entire board is now our policy committee.
And I think part of the reason, because I think that happened about the time I came in, and I think part of it is we weren't on at that point a three-year cycle of rotation of policies. So our goal was to get on and reviewing all policies every three years. So at that point, we said, let's do policy of a whole to get us back on that three-year rotation.
Well, when I came on the board, the superintendent did all the policies, handed us this group of them and said, you know, yep, these are done, approve them. So it was all, it was like just, you know, so you would see, you know, fifteen policies all at the same date approved. And then we went into this committee thing. So there were policies that were really quite old, that had not been reviewed for a long, long time. So the three-year cycle was not even on our, on our radar. So it's all evolved and this is where we are today.
That's one thing that I think we do really, really well, because if you look at other school district policies, some of those dates are ancient. And with the stuff that's been going on, I just wasn't sure what the history of that was. With a frequent review, it, it looks better to have a, even for the public, to have a current date on those things when they go to the website. Otherwise, it looks like we're not doing our job.
Well, I think under a title of school board policies.
Exactly.
What, I'm sorry, what?
Policy is one of the key definitions of what a school board member does.
Yeah, that's why.
That's why, under the subcommittee, it was like two or two members would know it's kind of really in detail. Where now we have that discussion and study sessions and it's more relevant for everybody. And it's similar to what we did actually with the finance. When I first got on, there was a finance committee and then that changed as well. Because of more transparency and the responsibility of the budget was really the goal, so that. Well, and it was also, six years before we did this, we did the same.
And obviously for deeper discussion too, with, with finance.
And so those two, you know, accountability and, and policy are kind of the two things that are really, you know, fundamental to a board member's, you know, role. So that's kind of why those two policies, those two groups are that way.
What I always tell board members in the, um, like phase one is that we recommend it be on a three-year cycle. Because as a board member, you're on it for at least four, right? And what's that?
You'll see everything once.
Right, so then you will, what I like to say is touch them all, right? It doesn't mean you have them all memorized or anything, but when somebody approaches you in the grocery store, you can say, that's interesting. I think we have a policy on that. And then, you know, help try and refer them to where the best information is. Great. I don't think that there is a, a, a board, nonprofit or profit. I mean, I don't know this for sure. I don't have the data. But I would, um, uh, posture to say that, um, boards sometimes can struggle with what, you know, knowing their role and knowing, knowing their lane, so to speak. And I think that, um, in our, I'll just, you know, speak from my own experience. I know that we're a board of seven. You're a board of seven? Or seven, seven?
Seven.
Part of seven. And seeing the, the expenditure of resources in time, in money, in energy, when you have seven different board members, seven different individuals trying to give seven different directions to one leader, right? Or even maybe you have only one, that's, that's not necessarily speaking in one voice. All of that effort that the superintendent trying to manage his or her board to understand, really and know the, the role and responsibility of the board. What I saw was taking away from her ability to be able to work for our kids, to be able to work with her team, to be in our schools, to be able to, um, with our students, whatever it might be. And so the whole speaking with one voice and being sure that, um, and that's another opportunity for us to educate our community, right? So when we are approached to a cub or wherever, um, and I'm asked about class size and I'll say, yeah, you know what? I agree with you. Second grade class sizes are too high. I'm gonna fix that. I'm gonna do something about that, right? And how that, um, however intentioned I might be, how that undermines not only my fellow board members, but really my superintendent's ability to be able to, to do her job. Because the community does see you as the one with the positional power. When really, we all know, right, as board members, the only time we have collective power or any power at all is, is together at the board table as, as a whole, right? So that, that, that practice, if you will, and that discipline of us to be able to, be able to communicate and speak in that one voice and be really clear about what our role, what our role is. I know different boards do different things. All of our communication, um, would typically go to our superintendent and chair. And then it was up to her chair to kind of help keep him, you know, his or her colleagues in, in line. But all communication went through both our, our chair and superintendent. I never personally would email our superintendent, um, on my own. It would always be the chair and the superintendent. And sometimes it was up to the chair and my superintendent to, to decide the best way to dispense that information. Often it'd be at, maybe at the next learning session. Because if I had the question, you know what, presumably two or three others did as well, right? And then that one-way communication, when it could come from our superintendent, then we were making sure that we weren't gonna be in, in danger of violating open meeting laws. Where I'm, you know, asking, hey Stacy, and then before you know it, the whole board's involved in this conversation going back and forth about an upcoming issue and where you stand. And so just, you know, having those protocols and those practices in place and even going through your policies about communication or what that looks like. But all those things.
So a board member never directly emails anyone other than the superintendent, but?
Um, we, well, no, when I, if I, so if I had a question for our superintendent, I would, um, I would email her, but I would also always include the chair.
Right.
Always include the chair. I never, um, and we were really very intentional about making sure that, um, everybody had access to the same information. And as Katie says, knowledge is power. We know that, right? And that, um, so if I'm emailing superintendent and, and the chair, and the chair sees, gosh, you know what, now two, three people have asked that. Okay, that's gonna be something that comes up then at a work session or a learning, you know, at the next board meeting in your report. Or maybe an email, um, saying, hey, you know what, uh, there seems to be, I need some clarity on this topic, X, Y, Z. But again, just so that everybody knows what, what are those protocols? What are those practices? So that there is not any ambiguity. And so, um, communities, uh, community members are also educated in how the board communicates.
That's a challenge.
It, it absolutely is.
I don't agree. I'm super on it. With social media and like the stuff that's out there, like what to respond to and what not to respond to and what's real and what's not real and, you know, what, what should we say? I mean, it's kind of crazy because I, you know, honestly, I don't do much on social media because it's that fact that I don't think a lot of that's really true. But there are, there is a whole community out there where stuff happens that can affect the school day, obviously, or it's something that. So, I mean, I, I think that's a real challenge, I assume, for every board. And so, you know, I just think as far as the communication piece, like that's where some of that stuff starts. And it's like, what's our role as a board member, um, you know, in that kind of situation?
And, and here would be a perfect case study, I guess, you know, our incident that we had last week. I had an email from a community member that I found out before I even thought about responding. The email to me had been shared with an entire private Facebook group. With somebody saying, I have sent an email to a board member to ask all of these things, right? So clearly, if I respond or any response that I provide is going to go verbatim, copy and paste out on Facebook. And you guys are getting to know me, I have a tendency to be a little verbose. It wouldn't be a short response. I'm not, I'm not really capable of that. I, I dive in. And, uh, I sent him an email and asked him to call me. Because I'd rather have a conversation and direct him to administration and direct him to the building team than attempt to answer all of these questions. But, but what is, that's, that's what I did. I don't know if it's right. I don't know if it's wrong. I'd love to hear perspective.
Could we expand on that too? Like, is our role, I would like some clarity that we could decide as a board. When it's situations that involve school, do we even participate? Because you're just opening yourself up to a.
Private data issue.
Private data issue, but also just a, a jury of the community before it's even gotten directed to where it should go. So now, well, what does the board say about this? And then we reply, well, we aren't representing the board. We're one person. But now we're getting, you know what I mean? Like we should have a much more clear protocol that says, it's on social media, hands off. Or if someone asks me, I say, call that principal or call the head of specials, you know, education or.
There is a kind of a protocol for that. First of all, like she said, if we receive a message like that on our email, we forward it to Lee because she's the aggregator of it as the chair. So she can understand all the comments that are coming across and then respond accordingly. And like the same thing, I mean, you don't respond to a question as a board member over social media. You direct somebody to something or tell them, hey, here's a administrative, here's a federal, here's a state, here's a whatever, go there.
And I don't, I never, I'm hands off always.
And that's, that's the way, I mean, that's the way I've always responded is, yeah, okay, so this is the definition of such and such. If you have an issue with it, you call here. You do this, you do that. But you, you, you don't tell them, you know, that sort of thing. But that I think has been, is, is a standard policy and I think it should happen that way. Now, the question that I have with regards to that is with everything that is going to leave, how do we see patterns of, of people's concerns and all that kind of stuff if we only see what comes to us directly? Not what's coming to everybody.
Not what's coming to everybody, so we don't understand the, the full breadth of an issue or the concerns. Whether or not we're replying to it is, is different, you know, cause, cause we shouldn't on behalf of the board, but, but still, we need some mechanism of understanding um, the concerns out there. And, and when, and it, we do run the risk, as we have done before, is an issue where they get a form letter back, you know, or, you know, from the board with the chair saying it and it's, and it, you know, to them, I mean, their kids are personal. So when they get a, a, a generic letter back after they emailed each one of us with no, you know, feedback whatsoever, i- i- it's very distressing to people, you know? So there's kind of be a medium way of dealing with this to let them know that we're human, we heard you, you know? And we understood that you sent it to me and this is what I did with it, that sort of thing, you know? Uh, some way of doing that and then also of understanding everything that Lee is receiving so that we're all, because what, what sent to you did not get sent to me, at least not that I checked, because I haven't been on email today, but. So I have no idea and, and so if all of a sudden a form letter comes from Lee back, I don't know, I mean, I have no clue what's going on.
But she copies us.
No, she copies us. Sometimes, I don't always get it. Delving into management law here, like, what are you gonna do about finding patterns about?
Right.
Uh, somebody doesn't like their teacher, are you gonna go fire a teacher? No, 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 I'm not saying that. But I'm just saying, you're delving into management of schools.
We don't need to know all those issues, yeah.
Nor should you.
Yeah.
Because you're dealing with minors, you're dealing with information that's private. You could say something, Jonathan, that we don't know what the administration has dealt with it or anything. I mean, from a first shot standpoint, in my opinion, the first role, the first thing should be going to Terry. To see if something's been addressed at all. And it, and to give her a heads up if it isn't, so that she knows the situation's going. As far as letting all the board members know, then we're starting to have serial media about something, in my opinion.
Well, I, I, hold on, I don't, I don't think it was, I think you're taking it a little too literally. What I meant is, is that there's an issue and you get one version of the issue and, and let's say, it is about something like blow on the lava, which did kind of blow up. You know, and, and, you know, by the time it got to us, it was like, well, gee, we've been talking about this for two years. But I heard this much of it beforehand, I had no idea the breadth and depth of the issue.
But doesn't, but Lee replies and copies us all.
No, it, and that, well, but you see, the thing is, is that with the, with the details going on, sometimes I only get one small piece of that. And then, and then it becomes an issue at a, at a board meeting or the community shows up all of a sudden at a meeting. Isn't there some way for us to kind of gauge the pulse of the community without having to get minutely involved in everything? And I'm not talking about minors' names or anything like that, but.
But Mary, when, when I would get an email or somebody an email and they forwarded it to me, when I responded, that you got the chain of that email, you got the, the whole thing of what the person first said.
Yeah.
So you, you know what my response was based on. I agree with you, the, the kind of the form response is, is not very warm.
It can be sterile.
It's kind of sterile.
It's difficult.
I mean, but at the same time, I mean, I tried to change some of the words on some of them just because it's like, I want to make this sound more personal, but. Their, their, their questions were almost always the same and in the reverse, quite a few of the, the emails we would get were ones that they just changed the name on them and sent them off, I mean.
Yeah, and we were talking about the boundary thing, yeah, that happened a lot.
But, you know, when I respond, I responded on behalf of the board, but the, the trail of the email goes with it.
Usually, I think it is, I, I do think you are pretty good about that.
So the first time you get it.
And historically though, I will admit, so going back to the previous thing that I didn't quite understand what you're saying, I didn't get that, sometimes I never.
I didn't get that either.
I don't think that I should.
Yeah, no, I don't think.
So I didn't even understand what was being responded to.
And this afternoon.
You didn't see that letter? Not, but, well, I know, I didn't actually see that letter, but that's okay.
Just, this afternoon, I sent something to Lee and Terry.
Okay.
That I was, that I had received this and I was just gonna make a phone call.
Right, I haven't checked, I said that.
You know, so there, there wasn't anything in response to him, to she. I, I think we've hit on two things that actually maybe at some point, um, maybe need to make it into policy. I mean, do we, does, is there, are there boards that have created any sort of a policy around board members' involvement with social media? I think that would be a helpful thing, if we actually have decided this is what we will and won't do.
We have procedures on communication. I don't know.
It does touch on social media somewhere, Mary.
I just, as we review, as we review policy, as we review policy, I think that's a really good thing for us to be, when we get to it. I think it's good for us to remember all of these discussions.
Can I piggyback on that one before you do your second one?
Do I have?
So with the social media, like part of what I'm concerned about too is like, then they're, they're trying, like people might be saying, like I saw in, in this exchange going on about the incidents that we're talking about. Well, the board member was, the board was sent an email and it told them this. And then I don't know if, how did they hear what the board was told and if, if. If what?
I said, I'm, I'm just, like I said, I didn't see, but I haven't checked email today, so I don't.
No, it wasn't an email, it's on the Facebook page, on that discussion.
No, okay, okay.
With, I think you saw with Mika, I'm assuming, are you in that group?
I, I probably am, but I was gone all weekend.
Oh, so, so they were saying that, um, uh, well, the board was sending an email that said this and I don't think that was a good response to the board. And so I'm saying, okay, somehow we've gotten down into the weeds here that we shouldn't be in, it should be, you know, unless Dr. Salo had said, I talked to a parent and I told them what I told the board.
So I, I think that's something we wouldn't even touch, we just send it to me.
So much of that goes back to the public not understanding that that's not our role. And that's, that's not us to try to explain it to them, but been trying for years and it still isn't getting through.
Right.
Um, you know, and the best response most of the time for me is if, if I get a parent that's coming and they're complaining about a teacher, let's just say, have you, have you talked, my response back is, have you talked to the teacher? You know, have, have you and the teacher talked, have you talked to the principal? And they have to go up a chain of command because I'm removed from that, I'm so far removed from that. You know, only once in my life did it really work well and that was when my son was a senior and his friends came over and I said, you guys better behave. And he said, mom, they're so afraid of you, there's no way that they're gonna pass up. As if I could expel them or something.
Yeah.
It's like, yep, that's right, Tommy. But, but otherwise, we're, we're not even, we're not into that, that, we're farther away and so you have to, our response should be to refer them back to the, the first contact they have, if it's with the teacher. If their issue is with a principal, then go back to the principal. If they don't get anywhere, then they go to the superintendent.
Yeah.
Don't we have that in policy already that they have to go, that we have to, I mean, I, I could have sworn.
I think it's in their communication protocols.
It's certainly in a protocol.
What about in your code of ethics?
It's probably in there.
I think that's two zero nine, maybe?
And we do have a code of ethics.
Cause I can remember reviewing it and that's the, that's the typical, I mean, you know, they have to go through the chain of command, they have to do this.
It's our operating rules.
So, so I guess, I don't know if that answers a question, like I don't go on those Facebook pages that they have or these, whatever. But if you do, or if I ran across it, what are you supposed to do? Should you engage in it and say, please talk to the superintendent, or do we just stay out of it? But we know that what's out there isn't right.
It's okay, I think to, um, I, I run into this a lot when they're going out for like a referendum. You know, and we've got all this conversation about, this is where the money's really gonna be used, why don't they take, you know? And so then they let the stu- superintendent and the chair know, um, here's what I'm hearing, here's what I'm seeing, this is on Facebook, okay? And then the highlights are hit, whether it's on the, um, on your website, um, an article in the paper, presentations, whatever, and just clarifying those things that are out there.
So not a direct response.
Not a direct, right, because there are groups that want to put misinformation out and it's like, oh, I wish I could answer because that's, I can tell you why that's wrong.
Everything's true.
But that's not our role, right? But that helps if we can redirect it somehow, but, um, because it is hard when these stories build and like, this number's put out and this percentage does and this person did this and like you go on, that is so not what is true.
Right. And, and there are times that, that, you know, I'll just use that example of like a second grade teacher, right? And you've heard from a few different people, they're upset about it, whatever, their content, you and you and you, that information goes
Just to.
over here. And then, um, Terry might say, you may have been heard, hearing a lot about a specific teacher and, um, come and discuss it with me if you have a question or depending on what, um, you feel is comfortable to be able to put out there. But it's usually pretty vague, but you're gonna know, or maybe you're like, I haven't heard anything about a second grade teacher. And then that might prompt a, you know, a conversation, um, with your superintendent. But, um, when it comes to the point where you need the information to make a decision at the board table and let's say it does, um, have a personal data on it or those kinds of things, then it should be marked confidential, okay? Then what I would do with it, when I was a board member, I would come, I'd have my confidential document, it's at the meeting in order for me to make a decision. And then I would take it and I would hand it back to the chair and they would, you know, they would, um, get rid of it. Because if I, if we need it in the future for some reason, you have it on file. I don't need it, I don't need it so somebody can accidentally see it or in my house or whatever, and the decision's been made. Sometimes we feel like we need all the information leading up to it, but we need more of the highlights. And then if we need certain information in order to make a decision at the board table, what can be hard is as a school board member, if I have the details and somebody, you know, is kind of like, yeah, I heard it was so and so, you know, and they're kind of putting out there and they're wanting you to ankle or, you know, give them that, you know? And so it, it helps you compartmentalize and it's also okay to say, you know what, our superintendent's working on it and I really can't comment on the details. And, you know, we're talking about data privacy here, so there's really not anything more I can, I can give you on that. Uh, we had that happen, I was, uh, we had a bomb scare, a bomb threat in our school district and I had, was out with some friends a few days later and they were, they were all talking about it right in front of me, cause they were hoping I'd give the little, yeah, those middle schoolers over at, you know, Dakota Meadows. So then, give them something, and finally I said, you need to stop.
Yeah.
And they said, what, what, what do you mean? And I said, no, I, this is, this is not what I came here for tonight. And, you know, I kind of laid it down and they said, wow, you take this really seriously? And I said, well, yeah, these are people's kids.
Right, yeah.
You know, so either you stop or I'm leaving.
Right.
And so the, oh, okay, that, you know, because sometimes we just think it's like the neighbor, you know, kind of some buzz, but think about, I always try and tell people, think about it if you were in, say, those parents' shoes.
Right.
Okay, that kid messed up, right? And they're fifteen and they messed up and how are we gonna deal with this? Doesn't mean we throw the kid under the bus, right?
So we're dealing with students, minors, et cetera, and quite frankly, I don't want, I wouldn't want the identities. Okay, that's, but I do have a concern with when I find something out through a very serious issue, like the examples that I gave when I, when I put that information up there about transparency and all that, when it deals with student safety and issues at the school. And I find out through a third party and then I'm told, well, you didn't need to know that because the superintendent's handling it. And has to do with a major lawsuit, a safety issue, sexual assault, I don't wanna know the kids. But I do think that given the, the, the impact upon safety and issues like that, that the board should be at least aware that this stuff is going on. And then we can go and ask questions. But like you, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna know names, I don't wanna know anything like that, I just wanna know that if there's an issue that affects the school district in that way, that as a board member, that's part of my responsibility and to work with the other board members and or the superintendent if a closed session is necessary or an independent meeting or whatever. But I don't wanna find out after it's been in the paper or just because the news channels show up because everyone else knows about it. You know, I mean, that's, to me, that's, you know, I, like I said, that's, that's, I think that's where we should be working as a team and getting together and, and actually be aware of that. So, and that's the type of patterns also that I think we should be aware of in case there is an issue dealing with, with, uh, safety or a bomb threat. You know, or, or an incident at a, at a school bus that threatened the safety of a, a kid or a, a legal issue or something like that, that, that dealt with the district. I do think we, as board members, we should be aware of those and the details, however, should be kept private. They should, you know, and again, I don't wanna know names.
I think that's really unfair, Mary, because I, the incident you're talking about, we work, working with legal. And just because the city found out information because of a city employee, that's a whole different story than what the public school was.
This isn't a, this isn't an attack, Terry, at, by, certainly comes with.
And with the nuance of that, you've said that, what about that particular incident?
There was more than that and I'm just curious about our role, that it's not, and, and it does concern me and I, it's, it's our role. And where should, when should we be, and I'm asking them, when should we be informed? But again, I, I, again, as far as the confidentiality goes, I'm very familiar with the Data Practices Act and the FERPA rules and COPA rules and everything else that goes with it. And I don't think that, and I don't want, I personally don't wanna know names and stuff like that, but I do wanna know when there is a, a safety or a security issue. Um, so if we have to deal with something in policy or we have to deal with a, a community member, anyone else coming up to us, that, that we're at least aware of it and we're not looking at our face, it's like, oh my god, what? That sort of thing, I, I think that's, maybe I'm wrong, I'm, I'm asking them.
Have a great area of management and governance there. Well, I, I think that part of this is. Management. Part of this is that when it gets to a level where the board needs to make a decision about it, we need to know about it. If, if an email goes out to the parents, we should get that email and I believe we always have.
Yeah.
But the day-to-day, a kid has a fight in school or whatever it is, we're not gonna hear about all that stuff all the time.
I'm not talking about the day-to-day.
But, but that's what I'm saying, I, I, if it gets to the level where the board needs to, where it gets to be a board level, we need to make some kind of a decision, like we have an unsafe situation at this school because this has been happening. That's up to administration to bring into our attention and I believe that that's when we need to know more.
Isn't this why we.
That's, that would be my opinion of it. And I do, well, and I, I, I'm not perfect at all, but, you know, the promise I made and there's one person here when I got hired, but the promise I made was, I don't want surprises and I don't wanna have the board have surprises.
You know, you've said it many times.
And I work hard, am I perfect? No. But I work really hard to make sure in cases, you know, like last week, right? You got information about three minutes after I saw something, you know? So I don't want you to be surprised, I don't ever, that, that to me is trust, if I look at that, that to me is trust, is to, to protect board members so that you're not in the public and hearing something that you should have heard from me.
And to me, this is a central issue, right here.
This is a central issue.
Right here.
And that you're making positive intent that I'm working and my team is working for the best interest of the district.
And that's not questioned here, my question is, is where should we gotten involved, like with the flooding of the homes and stuff like that? Should we have been informed before it was in the newspaper or, or something like that? I mean, where do we, where does it draw the line so we're not, again, surprised? And I mean, there's stuff that happens every day that, I, I, you know, whatever, but when there's things like that, you know, where is that supposed to happen? And, and how should we find out? And, and also, can you put legally, because normally, uh, because we're elected officials and you're doing it over that particular, you know, venue over email, um, if you wanted to put more detail in there, can you put a confidentiality statement in there and will that go water? You know, that sort of thing, or do you need to? Can you just say, hey, I'm going, you know, something happened, I'm not gonna put any detail in email, but you, you should know and if you have any questions, give me a call, something like that.
I don't think that the, I don't think the confidentiality would be held up, like the only thing, the only time I'm protected, the confidentiality is if I'm literally emailing with my lawyer, right? I mean, so I don't know that would, which doesn't negate what you said about, again, my, the way I have tried for five years to operate and not perfect is to make sure you know information.
No, and, and I get that, when I'm, when I'm, again, so, so we look at, what was, it's, it's, it's not about being perfect or not perfect, but I mean, let's, so take out whatever happened in the past week or something like that. Because under normal circumstances, that isn't something that should have maybe even come to our attention, I don't know, I haven't looked into it. But, um, let's talk about the, the, let's say, the issue with the, when the, when the pools drained and those homes got flooded and all that kind of stuff. And, um, you know, and it been going on. And um, you know, and it'd been going on and there was all this other stuff in the background that I don't wanna know, I wasn't involved in or anything like that. But where should we have been, or, or should we have been informed of that one before? Let's say we get a message saying, hey, news reporters are talking and, you know, blah, 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 you guys need to know about this cause the news knows about it. And then, and then I listen to the news report and it's been going on for a few days or something like that. Was that some, where, where did we have a policy or how do we know and how do you know what is supposed to be, go to the board? Like I said, I have operated for five years that I don't want you to have surprises. And there's times where you, where I maybe don't have all the information either. Cause there's two cases where I certainly didn't, and the city certainly had more information than I did.
And governance and management is a question for me here. In that case, we would not be the ones who would be handling the complaints from the neighbors or whatever. So that's, that's coming back to this again and kinda clarifying what is our role here. So how much, how much of those sort of things do we need to be made aware of? If our job is to set policy and to evaluate this.
If, if it's not at a board level, it's not our job.
That's what I mean. I don't know that we need to be told all those things. I, I'm saying, I don't think we need to know all those things because it doesn't affect how I'm governing. But if it's something that she feels could be a surprise for us and let's, you know, says, you should have a heads up on this because I think this could escalate. That's fine, but it's still not our role. It was not our role.
Yeah, I mean, cause of who we are and where we are in the community, yeah, people can come up to us and ask us all kinds of questions and that kinda stuff. I think it comes down to, what are you gonna do when you have the information?
Right.
What's your first call?
That's when it's the board level.
What, what, what's your first, I mean, so we hear something, okay. Somebody doesn't like their teacher, well, I, that's kind of a mundane one, but some major thing, I don't know, something maybe happened at a school or something at lunch and something major happened. And I hear it from my neighbor. Like, I guess as a board member, what's my first call? I mean, because you're showing, what's your trust level? Is my first call, like, oh my god, I'm gonna call, you know, somebody and make a big note, you know, hustle about it? Or am I gonna call Dr. Salo and say, this is what I heard? I don't know if it's true, I have no idea, but I've given you this information, go figure it out. I mean, I, it's your job to figure it out, it's management of schools, but it could be something that happens. And, you know, she can say to me, you know, what hap, what happened and, you know, I can, I, I, I don't, said, I don't even have to know the details. Or, you know, she can come back to me with a, say, well, this is what happened. And, you know, what, you know, what do you think, what do you think my response should be? You know, I mean, she, you know, in kind of a supportive way. Because these kinda things bubble up and not everything has a perfect answer. And it's difficult to manage when you're trying to manage the truth, but you're trying to be protective of people um and their identities and all that kinda stuff, and it's a big organization. So I, I think the first, you know, it's how you, how, how are you operating? Are you operating in the best interest of the district or are you operating in the best interests of someone else? Yourself, your special interests, your, you know, whatever, your political career, I don't know.
But I think Michael makes a good point that, okay, so if it is the flooding, you know, that Dr. Salo would say to us, you know, there's been some flooding issues in the community, it's obviously gonna be a community thing, everyone's gonna know about it. You know, we're dealing with it, we're dealing with it. At some point, this could become, could become a lawsuit. And when it becomes a lawsuit, that's, this becomes a board level thing to me. But it still is, it's something that we want to know about because it's a community involved thing. But are we gonna do anything with that information? No. It'll just help us to be, have some, be informed of it. And if somebody comes up to us, it's like, we can say, administration is handling it. The comment shouldn't be, well, we don't need to know, it should be administration's handling. So I don't know where the, you don't need to know came from or whatever, but.
Well, I think a few things um you want to think about is, one, you have to consider the source, right, of where it's coming from. And sometimes there, it sounds like perhaps you gave a specific example, there was maybe a breakdown in, whether you said it was city or county or whatever, and it may be some of that, I don't know how that happened, right? Um but you need to consider the source and oftentimes the details are not correct, right? Until you, especially when we hear things in the community, it's a person's perspective. Or it's a, it's, this is how I heard it, you know, and we're playing telephone, right? So it gets a little bit bigger every time it gets told, right? So consider the source, um but then also that no surprises at the board table. Uh we also don't want surprises in our community. Um but also there's the um, um leading up, those kinds of things in that saying, maybe, I don't know, nothing about this and somebody has told me about it, I say, that's interesting that you say that, and I'm sure our, our superintendent's working on that, or, you know. And so then calling Terry and saying, this is what I'm hearing. But then it's not, not go fix it, right? Or you need to talk to that second grade teacher, but it's, this is what I'm hearing. And then Terry might hear it from two or three of you and Terry, oh my gosh, you know, sounds like this is really getting out into the community and how we can we go, you know, after that. It's really hard when somebody writes a letter to the editor to not respond. And it's really hard. Or then we're talking about Facebook now or Twitter, whatever. Um and social media is so quick now, that don't even have time to process things.
Well, the, the level of communication and social media, in my opinion, just and how people react is, and they can hide behind a little name and a little picture.
They hide behind their computer.
Is, it, it has no credibility.
It's not civil discourse.
No, no, it's, it's, I don't, I don't find it worth my time.
So then, so maybe then the response, if it warrants it, is to, um, you know, we've kinda responding to the list, right, of what we've hea, heard varieties around, you know, so let's just answer those. And whether or not we put the question down or we just make, kinda make the statements to clarify as much as we can. But there's gonna be a lot of things we can't. And we spend a lot of time educating our community and letting them know. So as many of you asked and as Paulo was covering is what we do as board members. You know, you need to take care of that second grade teacher. I won't be taking care of that second grade teacher unless it gets to a point, it comes to the board level and we get to decide what we're doing with the second grade teacher, right? But it's actually then the superintendent's not even there, it's gonna be their supervisor. So the principal is the one that's gonna be sitting down and working with that person. So we talk about that, the chain of command, and a lot of people don't like that term, but also the chain of responsibility. Where does the responsibility sit? So the second grader is having trouble with their teacher and um this is always my example, cause it actually happened to me, I was in another job at the time when I was on the school board. And um my coworker came to me and said, have you heard about that second grade teacher, right? And they were telling me all these things about how their kid comes home upset, all this kinda stuff. Well, then I, for me, was to educate them and, well, have you sat down with the teacher? Well known, you know, she sounds so mean, you know, that's cause they, well then, okay, you know, then, let's say they go to them and they're not getting the answer they want, so they go to the principal. So sit down and have, they may not ever get the answer they want, right? What their answer is, get rid of that teacher or move my kid, well, it's not that easy, right? And so um we need to let them know that as well, is that it's not that easy. You just can't get rid of a teacher unless there's, you know, an investigation and there's something that was, you know, horribly done, that kinda thing, but there's a process. And sometimes a person does have, or there is a need uh for something to be done, but then also what do you need? You need paperwork, right? You need the Ts crossed, the Is dotted, so if you have a complaint, if you could get it written down and if you could share that, you know, where, where appropriate, then we have that information. So following the process for reasons, you know, that we need to, so, yes, Jonathan?
I'm, at, at the risk of beating a dead horse, um I'm, I'm thinking about these trust issues, these surprises, things that can, can occur. And um I think on both sides of this, we're all human as board members. Um if, if there's a moment that somebody seems to know something before we do, we are human and there's an element of, I wanna, I wanna be apprised of that. However, I think more importantly is for us to be prepared for the fact that inevitably there are going to be moments that somebody knows something that we don't. Specifically where these two legal matters that are being brought up, any legal matter for that matter, there may be very good reasons why we don't know, even though we feel like we should as, as board members, that we should be informed of such things. But in telling us, saying something to us could potentially have legal ramifications for somebody else. And so I, I, I think for me, I'm sitting here thinking, how am I going to be prepared for that moment?
Sure. The verbiage.
It's verbiage, right? And, and it is, well, I, no, to be honest, I wasn't aware of that. I'm assuming there's a very good reason why I'm not aware of it at this point, it's probably a rather sensitive matter. Um I have confidence in the leadership of our school district to handle it appropriately. And when it needs to be brought to us as a board, it will.
Right. So there is that leading up kinda thing in that you're showing confidence in your staff. Um you could just as easily say, yeah, don't, we've heard about that second grade teacher. You know, you could ea, just as easily say that, but what's that gonna do? That's not gonna do anything, right? And so, you know, leaving it up.
It's worse, yeah, we know about it, but.
What's that?
We know about it, we don't know anything about it. Um I do, you know, circling back also to what I was saying earlier. So let's say, you know, we handled it appropriately and all that. My mode has been to send an email in to say, hey, just to let you know, this is going on, you know, that sort of thing. Where I was concerned earlier is, let's say, I hear it, I send it in, no more, you know? There, there's been a couple of instances that where I just said, okay, here you go. And I don't care if I don't hear anything about it, if I don't hear anything about it, it's not an issue to me. You know, and it's been handled or it's been passed through appropriately. But how do we know if, uh for instance, if, if there's a lot of individuals on the board and we're trying to abide by the open meeting law and they're all hearing the same things from different segments of the community because something weird is bubbling up or something like that? Is that least responsibility to, again, to synergize and aggregate that information and let us know or to address it? Or do we just let it go until, you know, um something else is done? I, I don't know, I mean, I'm just asking that because like um in a, in a normal corporate environment or in other boards that I've sat on, usually that information is, okay, you know, we, we've heard from so many people that this may be going on, don't worry about it, we know about it. We, if we run into an issue, we'll let you know, that sort of thing. Is that appropriate or does it matter? I, I don't know, because I mean, here's the thing, here's the other thing I wanna keep into, keep, keep in consideration is that we're aggregating all this information, we're sending it to one person. That's a heck of a lot, especially in a district this size.
Possibly.
Right, possibly the two or, you know, whatever. But that's a, that's a lot of work. It's like, it's, you know, you must get a lot of emails.
If each one of you guys get something from a different, like a different, not the same person. You know, your group, whatever everyone's group, and they get something and you send it to, to myself and to Terry, okay, it's like, Terry, we're hearing this from a whole bunch of different people, there's gonna be a response. To, back to you or, you know, unless they wanna direct response to the person, there's gonna be a response back because it's not just one person doing it. And I, that's what I would expect. Whether it's right or wrong, that's what I would expect.
And I feel like that's our protocol that has been followed.
You know, I mean, even if there's one, like if, you know, if I heard something like awful that happened somewhere, I'm probably gonna ask Terry or Terry in the chair, it's like, this is what I heard, what's going on? And you have the opportunity to say, yep, we're dealing with it, or I'll check into it, and then I, and then I'm done. I'm done with it then, unless it keeps coming back.
Right, and again, what I, the protocol that we have in place is if I get a question, you know, I got two follow-up questions about an incident, I send something out to everybody. You know, and that's, that's what I try to have the protocol. If there's something that somebody has a question on, and again, I think the struggle is, is is it, is it something that the board needs to make a decision? You know, and, but, I mean, I try to answer those questions all the time, but sometimes there's twenty questions and it would take me twenty hours and is that how the board wants me to spend my time?
And that's what I'm actually getting at, is, is, is.
And a lot of times you don't need to tell us, I mean, and like Christie'll send out, well, there was a bus incident today because a letter was sent to parents. I appreciate getting that, I'm not gonna do anything with it, but I appreciate knowing that, yep, that happened and yep, somebody might call me before I get that email because my friend was at that corner.
We get almost, like, you know, whatever place, whatever shelter in place.
I, I guess from my perspective, I, I feel really confident. And I feel a high level of trust that what we need to be aware of, we are being informed along the way. I wasn't here when those other incidents occurred, so um I can't speak to that. Uh I would also, I'm gonna give, uh, I'm also just going to say, I think everybody grows in the role and I think where maybe, maybe today, you might choose to handle one of those things differently than you did two years ago. Maybe you do the exact same thing, but I trust that your ability to judge those situations is evolving and is in, and is always going to be making a decision on what's in the best interest of the district. I do have that, I have no doubt in my mind that that's where any of those choices come from.
And this is important, we'll talk about this in policy, and that is, I think, I mean, I'm glad that you're all raising this because how we do respond in the community, we have to look at, one of our policies or code of conduct is we should be positively representing the district. We shouldn't go, I didn't know about that, that's trouble. Because that's not, we need to as a board be, we're not out there to say, oh man, our district sucks and we aren't doing that, that's right, or that's right, and I'm always after so and so. But we have, we, that's not our role out there, and so we do have to be prepared when these things come up to think about how we are responding.
We take a two minute break. Are you coming, two minute break?
Two minute break?
Well, I, I guess I'm gonna, I was gonna ask the question at mind if we wanna continue or.
Can we have a go on?
Can we check in quick?
Yeah, let's check in and then we can take a break.
And then you can decide what you want.
Yeah.
So I feel, tell me if I'm wrong, but that we've been talking about this.
A little.
Right, this. This, I'm not, you know, I'm not a pre, or I shouldn't say I'm not a pre, but I'm, I don't have your specific policy.
I think that's probably our board discussion, our policy, but it's something that I, I do wanna have discussed, I just wanna lost.
Educating the roles and responsibilities, so Paulo was talking with you about the board governance model and that's how we moved into these areas. But again, looking at that um your roles and responsibilities are where you're like the top of the circle.
Yep.
Right? And then your superintendent, along with staff, is who's gonna implement, make it happen. And then communication protocol for calls. Conversation is how we work on this, right? Got that one. Chain of command responsibility, we talked about that one. Do people feel?
So my question on that top one roles and responsibilities is how we navigate, please come to our PTC meeting as a board member, and I don't know if four of us are gonna show up, or please come to our dyslexia meeting or whatever, like that sort of thing.
So you get inquiries from the community?
Yeah, and adding some structure around that, and that might just come to policy, like how do we navigate that? So A, we don't, four of us don't show up, right? And B, we're, we're not representing the board at something where we're really not representing the board, if that makes sense.
So is that a combination of open meeting law combined with where we're supposed to be? Not supposed to be, those are, like, PTC.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Invited to.
Because they might have different expectations when they say, please come as a board member to our PTC meeting or to our dyslexia meeting or whatever. Just some clarity around that, you know?
So what, um I think a couple of points there is you may wanna let them know, um I'm not the individual that's gonna be able to represent you, but certainly there's an opportunity for you to share that information. Um either at a board meeting or you could mail it out to everybody.
So we're all on the same page.
So you're all on the same page, you all get the same information. Uh you also, you wanna be careful of, yes, if, you know, four of you show up and then we come to the next board meeting and you see this in a video in phase three, right? You were there and you were there and you and you and the four of you, right? So you want to be careful of that, the opening law allows for chance of social gatherings, but.
The opening law allows for chance of social gatherings, but you're being invited as a board member. So I think it's communication back. There's also, it's reasonable to set, to set boundaries as well for yourself as an individual. You go to one, you're gonna go to, you're gonna get invited all.
I know.
So, and it doesn't mean you wanna, you don't wanna be informed or those kinds of things, but, but it's really important for the whole board to have the information.
Right. I guess that's the question. You're putting yourself in a kind of an uncomfortable role, like going, like especially to me into a PTC, because to what purpose do they want a board member to come to a PTC meeting? I, I would be wondering what that purpose was. And I can't go there and speak for the board. And if they want me to hear something, then the whole board should be able to hear that. So I think you said they should come to a meeting and voice whatever they have to say. And if, if you didn't say that, I think that would be a good alternative than having them come to one of, having a board member come, because that'd be my first question, why, why do you want me to come? I mean, I.
Cause they want to carry the water, is what they want.
Yeah. So then you put yourself in kind of an uncomfortable position.
And their special interests.
Your operating in special interests.
You know, I, I've been invited to several PTC meetings, I just sit and listen, they just want us to know that what's going on and all that and make it clear that.
PTAs.
PTA, sorry, PTA meetings. So, so you can hear what's going on at the individual schools and stuff like that. So I've been invited by neighbors and stuff like that and, I mean, it's clear, I'm not representing the board when I go, but they want me there. I mean, I'm not, I'm not talking.
There's a perception though. You are representing the board. There is a perception that you do, you are representing the board.
But they just want us to hear what's going on and we don't contribute or we shouldn't contribute.
What are we, what are we getting to all of the PTO meetings or just the ones?
The ones I've been invited to, yeah.
So you just have to be careful, you know, there's a balance.
I think that's an awkward thing if administrators don't know, because then they wonder, you know, so going back to that surprises. When I get a call from administrator that says, hey, did you know a board member was gonna be here? Cause all of a sudden they showed up and I didn't know why they were there and I didn't know. So now they're worried or concerned or surprised and I'm thinking we had protocols around this. So back to some of those surprises, you know?
It's a perception. Once a board member, always a board member. It's a perception whether we like to trust them.
I think it's trust them. Are you operating in a gotcha or are you operating in a respectful way?
No. And then we go to the, we go to the board reports, you know, I say, hey, I was in the school, I did this or whatever and.
Did they know you were coming to the school? That's like, that's what I'm trying to do, like with principals too, like is navigate how we do that policy, like if I'm going invited to a class, like does the principal know I'm gonna show up so I'm not caught off guard?
Well, usually I'm invited that way, so it's, it's not like I just show up.
Oh, I don't know, really?
Yeah.
Like even this town, I wrote to the principal.
I don't just show up.
My a parent. But did Caroline know you were coming?
Caroline was in.
Well, I know, did she know you were coming? I can tell you the first call the next morning was to Terry to say that you were there. I mean, it's, it's.
Like, the principal didn't know I was coming.
At the middle school or whatever it was, cause there, cause, because the promise I've made to the administrators is when I go out of board and when I know a board member's gonna be there, I let them know.
You don't want surprises. They don't want surprises.
And that was another thing we did. So, I mean, and I don't say anything.
By the principal, though? I mean, that's, that's.
By the whole.
Like our protocol is let the principal know you're in the building. That's what I'm trying to clarify for us as we go into policy. Is like, how do we build trust by saying, like, like when I got invited to this town, I let the principal know I'm coming, I was invited and I'm gonna be in your building that day. And she didn't know until I emailed her.
Can have no surprises and then have surprises.
So when, so we were invited to this town, we all RSVP'd, they knew what we were doing. We didn't come there saying, hey, I'm on the board and blah, blah, but we came there to help and.
I know, but I just, because that's our protocol, let the principal know I did and she didn't know I had accepted the offer. She knew I'd been invited, she didn't know I was coming that day.
You don't know where that communication maybe happened.
Exactly. And that's one thing I have to be better at is like, I really try to say, okay, I was asked to come observe this in the English classroom with the sixth grade wonder project, so I'm gonna email Sasha and I'm gonna copy Lee and Terry and say, I'm going to be in the building first third and sixth hour today, just so you know, I was invited by so-and-so and here's who it is. And I think that's one of the questions I have with policy is like clarifying what those protocols are. Maybe that's not policy, maybe it's protocol, but that's something that I feel like I don't feel like we have clarity on as a board. We all have our own sort of definition of what that might be, so.
So a couple of things, so if we're wanting, going to a school to visit, to see things, I know this is gonna date me a little bit, but when I was on the board, that's when smart boards came out. And we're like, how do they work, right? We wanted to know, so do I just show up at Roosevelt Elementary? That's where my kids go to school, right? Do I show up and say, hey, my son's in third grade, I'm gonna go into his classroom because I wanna see how a smart board works, right? Or do I say to the superintendent, or we all, a few of us did, we're like, we don't understand these smart board things. And so then it, there, it was decided how we would learn about that, you know? Oh, okay, be great for you to come into this third grade classroom in Roosevelt and you can all come in, everybody knows they're coming, you know, cause sometimes it's like, why is a school board member here? Another thing is, is sometimes school board members wanna just pop in. And what we have to remember is our, as Paula was saying, our power is at the board table. Right? It's at the board table. And so when I come into a school as a school board member, what do you do with a community member that comes into a school? Have they're a parent?
They get background check. Yeah. They have to put in their ID and then they check.
Oh, so you guys have like the whole ID?
Yeah.
So they have to basically sign in, right? State their purpose. They probably have to designate where they're going.
Yeah.
So let's say third grade classroom, right? Okay, and then is there any, do we make sure that the teacher knows they're coming or, you know, so those are all things that, and so that's true of us as school board members too.
Okay, so here's the question. I mentor, oh gosh, I don't know how many kids in the MNCAP's program and also in the senior high, been doing it for years. Do, I'm not allowed to do that anymore? Is that a board movement?
Well, I didn't say you're not allowed to do it, but just let's say you're not on the board. In order for you to do that, you probably still have to sign in and, and this, the board chair would know, or the, sorry, the principal would know, right? And so letting them know, and so they might say, you know what, actually Tuesday's not a good day because we have this, this and this going on or for whatever reason. Cause we have to be careful of data privacy that we're in a school and also some days are just not appropriate and then maybe we have a kid, there's certain things happening or something we know that's kind of going down, kind of thing that we really don't need to know about as school board members. And so we just wanna check in and make sure that it's, just to let them know. I mean, if we, if we talk about like the chain of responsibility, the chain of command, so there's a school board, there's a superintendent, there's a principal and then their building, right, their teachers and the students. And if, if somebody, you know, were to just walk into my classroom or even walk into my school, the principal, I wanna know, are you here to, what are you here to do?
But you understand that's what mentoring is about, I have to pre-schedule it weeks in advance and get the set time and do all that kind of stuff.
Right.
Principal has to know about who's gonna be there, so.
So that's what you would wanna do, the same thing if you decide to do that as a school board member.
But I'm not doing it as a school board member, I'm doing it as a, as a mentor.
You are doing it as a mentor, Mary, but you are a school board member at the same time.
No, I get that.
So the perception, it's frustrating, the perception is still there. I wasn't on the board for two years and people thought I was still on the school board because I was a school board member. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's the way they think, you know?
But, but, but nothing's secret, I mean, I'm actually on a list.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying that. And when you go, to me, it feels different when you go into the school and everybody that's supposed to know you're coming, it knows and you're mentoring. That feels different to me than when you show up, and I'm saying you as anybody, shows up at a PTC meeting or some other event that's going on. When you go there, they look at you as a school board member.
I get that, but I also don't just show up. I mean, it's but planned, I've been invited.
But I know, but you maybe have been invited, but then does the principal know, does Terry know that you're in the schools? Because you're there for a different reason.
Our agreement is, right, to email, and if Terry, the principal and the chair are not the chair, I don't know, when we're going into those things.
Well, I think if we're gonna be respectful of people's jobs, right? I think it's reasonable to say, you were invited, okay? I was invited by three PTC or members and, but letting the superintendent and the principal know. So then they can be prepared for that. I know when, when I was on the board and I went to my.
The principal was the one who invited me.
So the principal invited you?
Yeah, the principal and the head of the PTC.
And when you responded yes, then the principal knew you were coming?
And this was done a month or so in advance, yeah.
The principal knew you were coming, but that's not what I heard initially, so I just wanted to be clear.
No, it's because she's headset. She actually heads the PTA meeting, that's the way it works here, I guess. So I, yeah, this was not a surprise.
So she invited you, not a chief, not a.
Well, it was a combination.
But I'm just saying, that's what I'm asking to learn, I'm not accusing, I'm saying, so that happens, so I, I write back and thank the principal and I copy Terry and say, thank you for the invitation, principal, Warner, whoever. I'd be happy to attend and copying Dr. Sell, she's, so she's aware, I'll be in the building, is there, you know, anyone else that needs to know or whatever. That's what I wanna clarify is that we're building trust by doing those things.
Well, it also would be helpful when we do get invited to some event by a teacher that for sure the principal's name is on that email.
Exactly.
Then we know that the principal knows. And I can't say yes or no whether they've always been on or not, I don't know.
But when you're inviting.
Had to, if you're like, I'd like to learn more. But if a teacher's gonna go and invite school board members to some event, they for sure should copy their principal. And I'm not saying they do or they don't, I just think that that's what should happen.
Jonathan, did you have something to say or are you stretching?
We were, we were checking in and then we got onto a, a new topic that I think the reason we were checking in to see if we had stuff that was undone.
Oh, okay, yeah, we did, we did.
Which is, which is, yeah, we were kind of undone. This one is, is really a curious one to me, Mary, and it has been for some time, cause I know that this is an issue for you. I don't, maybe I phrased that wrong, but I know that you feel constrained in some way. And you've said that when these things happen, you know well in advance, they're prepared, they're planned, your schedule was tight always, you know weeks ahead of time when you're gonna be in buildings. I'm just, the thing that puzzles me is, what's the concern about sending an email to say that I'm gonna be mentoring some students and I'm gonna be at the high school on Tuesday?
Well, actually mentoring actually occurs at, at Caribou most of the time, actually.
Whatever the issue is, whatever, whatever it is, I'm, I'm, I'm just, it's, it bewilders me to, I don't understand why you're concerned about it. So I would love to understand your perception or your perspective on, on why this seems to come up again and again.
Well, it's, I'm a community volunteer and I've been in Shark Tank and I've been doing this and, and the mentoring program has been around since MNCAP's got started and other programs. So it's, it's no secret, you sign up, you do it. These kids are, the purpose of it also is to make the kids responsible to know how to use a mentor. So they're supposed to learn how to do the calendar, the whole bit, and then I report back to their teachers on how well they did and write, you know, so everything is in the.
I don't question the program, yes, I just say yes and it's wonderful.
Most of the time don't even know I'm a board member.
And I think it's awesome, and I think it's awesome that you're there, and I don't think the kids need to know that you're a board member. I will ask again, what's the harm in sending an email to the principal or the superintendent informing that I'm going to be here for my, for this program on this day? I, I don't.
There's no harm, it's just, it's just not, it's just not usually part of the normal procedure and it has nothing to do with me being a board member. I'm a business owner and I mentor the kids in the business program.
When you run for school, you get a brochure that says.
I, I think you guys are here.
And if every single time I go to mentor a kid, I've gotta tell Terry, that, I mean, that's just kind of, I mean, that's really, well, it's, it's kind of.
Every time my daughter forgets her iPad and I'm dropping it off at the high school, takes me 13 seconds to text Terry and say, I'm dropping off the iPad because Bella forgot it. I just, it's, it's, I have a hard time understanding why that's an inconvenience, that's all.
It's not an inconvenience, it's just weird, I mean.
Well, and we thought on the path of helping one student at Caribou, where we started was being in the schools, going to an orientation and going to a PTC meeting and not letting the appropriate people know. So I wanna kind of back off of the micro, you know, when I go to Caribou with this one student, if, if Terry and Dr. Beazett know that you're mentoring kids and it happens on this sort of schedule, then that maybe they just need that umbrella thing, but when it's these other events, I feel like we're not always consistent. And I feel like we lose trust in each other and as an admin team when we aren't fully following what we agreed to do. And when we, we just ran, so we're noobs, right? We just ran for school board a year ago, but, you know, you go to MSBA and you get the brochure that says, what does it mean? And it says you are 24 hours a board member, no matter what you're doing in the community, period. And if you're not comfortable with that, don't run for school board. So we carry that even though it's difficult and awkward at times, we agree to that when we run for office. So that's, it's hard, but that's part of this role.
Right.
I guess, I guess I would respectfully ask that just out of respect for the team and for the purpose of helping everybody could be able to build that trust. That, that would be a request that I would make of you as a fellow board member to inform folks when you're in the building. And I, I have a hard time, I just, I, I haven't heard anything that to me seems like a great reason not to. That's, that's part of my challenge.
We're asked to, we're asked to do it. It just seems micro-managing and it has nothing, I'm not there as a board member. I do a lot of things in the community. Heck, I've even done, you know, I'm a forensic investigator for cybersecurity, I've done stuff for the city council, I'm not gonna tell anybody about that, that's not an issue.
Well, there's, you know, a couple of things.
But you just said that I'm a school board member 24 hours a day. I have a job too.
You are viewed as a school board member.
Right. So when you go to anything district related, we have protocols in place of how we notify people. You don't have to notify them when you go to your cybersecurity meetings, you don't have, because that's not district related. But yet if you went there and said, I'm really concerned about our HR director, that's different, right?
Of course, but that's not, but that's.
Exactly.
But that's totally, that would be a conflict.
Okay, okay, let's, let's circle away against you, but it's almost nine. And I think Katie's gonna say something, we have to decide how long we wanna go.
Okay, let me, let me just say this and then we'll get you there. I promise, I'm gonna say these two things and then we're gonna be done. So there's a couple of things we're talking about here, it's the public perception. And that you never get to take that school board member hat off in that there's a public perception. So when I would show up for conferences for my kids, do I wear the badge, don't I? Am I there as a school board member or just there as Mary's parent? That's a hard line to walk. And, but the teachers are like, oh, she's in the building, right? And I could never, you know, when I wanted to talk about my kids, I would say, I'm just here as Mary's mom. And they'd sure, oh, sure. Yeah, you know, that kind of feel to it, and then they know, I'm still a school board member, so, do you wanna take a break?
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay.
Well, how long do we wanna keep going?
I'd probably take me less than a minute, to be honest.
So, how about we just take a couple of weeks?
How long do we wanna keep going, because at some point everyone's gonna be tired and then we're not gonna be that.
Let's take our bathroom break and come back and decide how much we wanna.
Come back and then we will finish reviewing this.
Okay.
And then we will be done.
We'll be timing you, Stacy.
I must be really thirsty.
I did catch that at first.
I have to.
Do you want a water, Katie?
Yes, please.
Either a hot or a regular?
About an hour ago I was gonna get up and give you guys water. Going here. Drinking my cold Caribou.
Oh, yes, yeah. Did you have that hot one again, right, with the sriracha?
Spicy, yeah, spicy mocha. When we were way up north, we're tied in like a six and a half hour drive. We stopped in to get something at Caribou and, and I saw that they had spicy mocha and I said, oh, I'll, I'll take the spicy mocha, and they're like, hmm, do you wanna sample first? And I said, no, I think it's okay, and then the one guy goes, you know, it's fine, but it's hot right here. And I'm like, ah, we got some Norwegians up there, you know, things are spicy, so.
It's spicier than ketchup.
It's good, I like it, spicier than ketchup.
I've never had spicy mocha.
It has like red pepper or sriracha in it or something, but it's not, but it's not real, it's not, it's not that spicy.
I was gonna say.
I think they know, you know, it's Caribou, it's a Minnesota based, they're not gonna make things too spicy. Get some lockup. Did they leave those cookies for us?
There is, they were over there if there's any left.
I just need a little, oh, it's just the one one for us, alright.
Ben, you know, is there like Roy?
Is, oh, is it Roy?
Yes. Oh, I gotta take one. There's a eleven, nine, oh, there's a berry. Anybody else?
Oh, no, we got these, thank you.
Oh, I got this, thanks. Should put a coffee maker in here. There used to be some, there used to be some, but I don't know. There's a Keurig in, in my conference room.
Does it Keurig in there?
Oh, I'm fine, I just have, you know, they put a coffee pot on.
Stacy, they are no better.
They have a bun, but it doesn't work in the, in the other, in the P C, right, that huge bun that I've never seen on.
She is.
It does, it does.
I think, yeah.
I think it used to be here, a bun.
Yeah, cuz uh.
She is.
We, yeah, sometimes when we have senior leaders in there, I think they make it.
So it's her picture in the management too.
What? I know, it's kinda hard to remember, I don't understand.
Yeah, 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 I actually.
Stall Street, you know, I was like this, I was like.
Did you like that? Did you like that?
Is that Stacy?
I have probably the picture of that Yale.
I would have taken a picture.
There are very few times, there are very few times in my life that I'm the person who's had the filter that actually made me not say something like that. I resisted saying that to you when I came back here.
I got no filter.
I'm having a hard time down the bathroom looking at her. Tigian did not, Tigian did not, I'm just like, go north.
Oh, he's on the work?
It's, I'm not really sure where it is, I have a lot of video here that I'm not gonna watch right now.
Alex made snowball fart.
No, very different. So Katie, before, I know you're gonna. His talent was making a smoothie or a food show or something, so.
Did you have video?
I think so.
Alright.
Follow your instincts.
Yeah, I know you're gonna go through that, I just wanna offer one more thing just for everyone's consideration, just a different perspective to ruminate on. So, you know, we've talked about just the perception, right, and that school board members, like it or not, fair or not fair, we do have positional power, right? We don't have individual power, but there is a perception, right, of positional power, and when you look at the hierarchy, it's just how it is, right? So, I, I use the analogy of if I was a student or even just a parent, you know, kinda walking around and all of a sudden like cops are all around me and I'm like, why, where the heck are the, the cops here? Something must be wrong, right? My cortisol level goes up, I really can't think as much, I'm really preoccupied and concerned about what's going on, I've got some anxiety. And so many parents I've talked to had explained that's what it's like for them, or teachers in the district, when board members would show up unannounced, but they didn't know the purpose. Because was I, and I would, honestly, if I think I was kind of a bad parent, because I'm like, I never went to the schools because I didn't wanna be, you know, people don't think I was there watching, but. But hearing from the teachers and, and when they knew that, hey, you know what, just like me, right, if a cop, if I saw a cop, oh, they're here to talk to the, you know, class about career in law enforcement. And they're here to talk to the eleventh grade, you know, specifics class or whatnot. That's a very different frame, because I have the, the prior knowledge, right, and the, the purpose very clearly articulated why they're there. And I think too, that's something to think about with our, our staff when board members, when we come in the building, that if they know, hey, I'm your mentor, and everyone knows that, and great, great to see you, good luck with the kids. You show up and they don't know why you're there, they may not know that you're, you know, gonna be, whatever it might be, right? Because again, with that positional power, it, it does, it adds a level of stress that impacts the learning environment, and I think that's what we have to be cognizant of. And so, just thinking about, yeah, if we can just, again, more information, no surprises, and just share, all communication whenever we wanted to go into a building, always went through, again, the superintendent. And she also would talk to her staff as best as she could communicate with the principals and administrators to let their staff, that a teacher didn't just invite a board member to come, you know, to his or her classroom, that it went through the principal, then it could go through our superintendent. And so everyone was in the know, because ultimately, you know, we don't wanna have impact on our kids that isn't necessary, unnecessary for them to. So, just something to think about, I think, just again, more information that we can share with people of the purpose of why we're there.
Great.
Thank you.
Great example.
Looking at what we have here, you know, we talked about these, but not in real specifics as far as, you know, specifics in specific policies and protocols, but we're gonna be doing that when we start looking at the two hundred policies, which. Governors, which is managing, we've talked about that, accountability, I think that was the, what did that say, community? Accountability, the, to the community, but then also to the board team. Okay, so we've been talking about how we're going to be communicating one another in order to build the trust and better understand that, because you are a board team, the.
Sorry, I didn't see, I couldn't read that, so that's why.
Yeah, I know, I, we'll take pictures and then we'll type it out.
That's okay.
But even though the superintendent is unable to vote, they're all part, you're all part of the team.
Yep.
Right, so any, and in state statute even, I mean, anytime there's a meeting, the superintendent gets notified as well. Because we've had times where school districts, school boards have said, well, let's meet, and they just didn't tell everybody what they need about.
I've got a question about that, because like, like for that large strategy meeting we talked about earlier, that wasn't even on our calendar, the district calendar. Are, is everything that we do supposed to be at least on the calendar or something like that? Is it supposed to be, I mean, like all of our meetings, obviously we've got a, we've got a lead time and stuff like that, but, because there's been, you know, feedback, and I know I have a hard time finding things. And there's certain things that, that weren't put on either from whatever reason or whatever, but is that the, is that the way that we should be making sure that things are there? So like this meeting should be on the district calendar or something like that, and all of our study sessions and all that, and any of the, the meetings that we have.
That's all on the district calendar.
On the website. Well, I mean, I think there are levels.
It's on, it's on our website, under school board.
It depends on the level, I mean, like your school buildings each have their own calendar too, that's not on the central calendar. There was a time years ago where everything was on like a printed calendar and they tried to put everything on there, but it became too cumbersome in the sense of the number of events, so.
All of our meetings are in the calendar.
Every single meeting's on the calendar, every single one, it's on the district page. And then I think when we have special events and things like that, that gets highlighted across the top, you know, main part of the page, like we've done things with whatever, information night, kindergarten, I just was on the other day, kindergarten information night is on there, you know, different buildings, I mean, I, I just, I don't think. I don't think there's a central, for main district things, it's on the district calendar. I know kindergarten stuff's on there, I know our board stuff's on there, but when it goes to individual buildings, you actually have to go to the actual schools and see their calendars.
Because it's too cumbersome.
No, I get that, but like the, the November first strategy meeting that I was referring to in the beginning, that wasn't on the high school calendar and it wasn't on the district calendar, is that something that we're stressed to? That's, yeah.
That wasn't an event, and to me, that's an event, that's like kindergarten, that's like a, it's like a highlight on the, the main part of your webpage, I mean, so.
Yep.
Uh, social media, we talked some about that, there was another one over here with social media.
Yeah, that was me, social media.
Okay. So can I go back to accountability for a minute, where you checked it off, and I know Jonathan's got it too, up above?
Just, and this I think might go more policy too, but I, and, and in community engagement, how we talk to the community, but there's this sort of like, this emphasis on the board's job is to be accountable to the taxpayers and hold the superintendent accountable as a. And sometimes I feel like accountability, we use more as a, I'm waiting for someone to make a mistake, you know, and I'm gonna catch you, as opposed to we're all on the same team, but if, if the superintendent is using the credit card to buy a new car, then we gotta say something, right? And so I, and I think we don't have a good perception of the community either, that yes, we're accountable to taxpayers, but our number one job is not to keep their taxes low, it's to take care of our students in a responsible manner that we need to do. So that's just one, we don't have to address it more, but it's, that's kind of a big one for me, and I feel like people sometimes misuse that term, accountability, yeah, like, well, your job is to catch these mistakes. Well, if your boss wants, if I work for somebody in a business, if he wants to read my every email and be at my every meeting and sit on my every phone call and catch me, I'm gonna get really freaked out. And the same with the community, like trying to educate them that, here's where our directive is, here, coming back to our strategic plans, so.
Well, you are, it's basically how you, are you operating out of the area of trust and, as long as you're trust, or are you operating on the area of mistrust?
Well, I think being, I think being prepared for those kind of conversations, yeah, if somebody asks me, how am I holding the district accountable, I'm gonna talk about our big picture plans.
Commitment to the kids.
About our commitment to students and how our students are performing and that we're working on improving.
I think we're all here for that same thing.
That's what we're accountable to.
Right.
Yeah, we gotta make sure, among, among those many things, yes, we, we pay attention to how the, the district manages its finances, that's one small piece of accountability.
But to one level, to what level?
Right, exactly.
Upper level or not. A couple of weeks ago and they're having some issues with making cuts and those kinds of things, and people were asking them, where's all that concession money going? It's like, ah, you know, we're not gonna save the district selling popcorn, you know, so, people, but, but that's what's closest to people and that's what they see and get. Because they're not in the middle of it, and so that's also part of what you say is, I get a lot of information, I get it from the community, I get it from staff, you know, and we study, right? And people also need to understand that, you know, we work on hiring good people, right? But also explaining to them, you know, the board's role, it is more than, do you meet twice a month?
Yeah.
I mean, basically, right? It is more than two meetings a month. They may tell you that in order to run, but that's, it's more than that, right? There's probably some committee meetings and some other things, you read, you study, you get information, and you get stopped in the grocery store, right? There's a lot more to it than those two meetings a month, and I think it's reasonable to educate people on that, you know, we don't get to that level, we don't go down that deep, but that's why we have a director of finance, that's why we've got a, you know. Okay, um, let's see. Um, board attendance?
You're reaching out a wire right here, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, always, by definition, always.
That would, that's, that's my guess, okay, but, so when I have somebody that talks to me about that, an individual, I say, you signed up for this, you maybe didn't know it was more than two meetings a month, right? But this is what it is. And so they need to decide if they can do justice to the position.
I was just gonna say that when people don't come to a meeting, I try to encourage them to either watch the, all of our, all of our meetings are videoed.
Right.
And our work sessions are audiotaped, and sometimes the audiotape isn't that great, I mean, I listen to it, but to get something out of it, because for me, the frustrating thing that happens is when people aren't here and we have these discussions and then they come to something. They wanna change everything or they wanna review up everything, and it's like, you know, I, I've been here now for five hours, I really don't wanna go through this all again with you, because you didn't come to the meeting.
Right.
And, or didn't even tell me that you weren't coming. And I didn't put that up there, but we did have a little discussion on that earlier this year and it kind of goes with this, when we have a board meeting, we need four, four members. And it's happened twice in the last two years where it was like a minute to seven. And I didn't have, we didn't have four people. Now, they came in, now we had, we were able to have the meeting, but I'm sitting here looking out at an audience and having to tell them we have to cancel the meeting or we have to postpone the meeting. That's, that's not, that's very disrespectful to everyone.
Everyone.
And so we had a little discussion about that.
It's disrespectful to your fellow board members certainly, but it's also disrespectful to your teachers, who are gonna say, why can't they show up?
One, we have administrators that have prepared presentations.
Just never.
Just moving along the process of the business of district.
And, and, so do we have students that show up and wanna give a presentation or a thank you or whatever it is?
So it's, it's, it shouldn't have to be said in my mind, it's a common courtesy, but something that I've had to break up.
Right, and at your organizational meeting, you would have said.
And that's what we said.
We did, that's what we said.
Which was, we just don't have two weeks to go.
Okay.
Creating community engagement, I don't know exactly what you meant by that.
Nor do I.
We talked about.
It's this, it's this nebulous thing of, is there, is there actually a way for us to proactively help people understand what our role is? To reduce the frequency with which we have conversations where we have to explain to people what our role is.
Honestly, I don't.
And I don't think there's a solution.
Ask Lee, twenty years, I don't think, no, no. I, I don't think it's necessarily that, but I do think that, and community engagement's talked about, it's just getting parent, more parental involvement at, with us at a board level. On things, like specifically about like our platform, like being an advocate for the district as a whole, is where I think just, and it's just informing people, you know what I mean? And maybe these people are people that can go out and speak, hey, well, the board really does this, you know what I mean, it's just kinda, I think that's the way it's gotta spread, so we're really trying to work.
And if you find the, the great answer to that, let me know when you're gonna be the keynote speaker.
I'll write the book.
It came up even as like, you know, write something in the paper, like have an editorial about being a board member, what's it to be a board, well, then they have to read it, and if they don't read it, then, you know.
Right.
Because everybody forwards that kind of stuff on Facebook, they love to say, look at what my board members did.
Sometimes they do.
Right, right.
Alright, so communication emails, we talked a little bit about that, is there more specific questions around that?
Of course it's dead.
Somebody, personal devices, that's where that was. Um, we recommend you have a, a district email?
Yeah, we have a district email, but we have district iPad, iPads where we get all our information on. I'm just wondering from a standpoint of like, people's phone devices.
Don't put your phone on the table, don't put your.
Well, I mean, I was told when I first, like I said, is like, is open to open meetings, so if I bring my own personal device and use some type of whatever on here, I mean, I'm opening that up to.
Yes.
To, to open, okay.
To, for if there's a data request.
For data requests on your device.
They're gonna, yeah. If you, if you use that for your school board communications or those kinds of things, that's why we recommend you have a district email, because if you're using your work email, right, and those kinds of things.
Use your district email.
But, and the device is, is subject to the cloud environment and not the actual physical device, by the way, that has been precedent. So, that's not a big deal, but the thing is, is that.
Well, I have requests on my personal cell, to get my personal phone.
But our phones or your laptop, if they want it to, if there's school district stuff on it, it could be data requested.
Right, but the thing is, is that, is that they have to actually show that information left the, the, uh, school district website. And you gotta understand that in my work, I cannot connect the iPads to my home network or to my work network, and I wouldn't, and I never use my cellphone for anything associated with that. But I understand that people don't like the fact that I bring my own laptop, but I'm always getting on the cloud, I just get it on via VPN connection. So, and, and this has been kind of brought up with, with Marcus and a few other people, that, that the transmission from the iPad to the network here is one hundred percent clear text. And it's just, I do cybersecurity for a living and I can't have that on, I can't use that in the network.
And it's just, I do cybersecurity for a living, and I can't have that on, I can't use that in the network. So it's-
I mean, I just think it's, I, I think it's opening you up to risk, that's all I'm saying, just from the standpoint of-
But then there was, that's your own choice.
Yeah, that's your own choice, right.
We, and I'm not a tech person. I know what I've been told, and I know what I've seen in other districts, so that's, that's what I'm relying here.
I think the one thing related to that too, just, is, you know, making sure that we're all using board book for making decisions as far as the data that we're being used, and not having, you know, our own version of it, or our own, you know-
Well, we have to all see the same data.
Right, yeah, I mean, so-
We can't pull from somewhere else and not.
And be making our decisions with that data.
Well, we can go out to the state statute that's referring, we can go out to the MDE that it links to every now and then, we can go out to the MSBA that it links to every now and then. But we can't do our own spreadsheet based on our enrollment over the last 15 years and use that as a thing.
Why not?
Because that's not public information, and we-
Well, no, but it's all gathered from public information, so-
But Mary, when we're in the course of a meeting, you're, you, you are, any one of you maybe looking at information that somebody else doesn't have. So it's hard, you can't have a discussion because then that's public. If you, if, if anybody wants to have some information out there, I mean, to me, if it has to do with enrollment, it should go through Julie and then be presented so that we all have the same information to speak from.
So like today, when we were gonna go over the budget, I pulled up the board book from last year this time to compare the differences. I take those numbers and I put them together, so I'm not opening up two PDFs at the same time. What's wrong with that?
You're looking at something that I'm not seeing.
But it's available to us.
So how can I have, how can I have an intelligent discussion about something that I'm not seeing and only you are seeing? Would be my point.
So, the, what, the information that we have then should be shared with everybody.
Yeah, and it, it is, it's, it's out there on the public, I just happen to look at last year's at the same time, January of 2019 to January 2020, when she talked about the difference, so I opened up the difference, and I looked at it, and I said, okay, here's what we grew at last year, here's what we grew out this year, because all she put down was a percentage, and I wanted to see the number.
Right. But, I get, I get what you're saying.
It's on board book.
Yep, I get what you're saying, and I get what you're saying too. And if that's, if, if it can be put together like that, and it helps in making a decision, then, then they should maybe all have it to be able to-
I have that.
It's only, I'm not saying you did anything wrong, I'm just saying-
I, I, I know, but what's wrong with doing that homework and just asking a question based upon, hey, January 2019, it was this, and January 2020, it's information that was given to us by the school district, I just, either I-
But they're presenting information that we didn't get ahead of time, I didn't get it ahead of time. I didn't, I didn't get it ahead of time.
But, how did you not get that ahead of time? You were here last year-
You're comparing two things, you're putting two documents in front of you, and you're looking at it, nobody else in the room is looking at it. No one else sees that particular screen at that moment.
But I-
So if you want, if you want a comparison, then I guess I would appreciate to, that you ask for that comparison, or if you feel you need to do it yourself, and, and then bring it to the board table, I think it should, more appropriately, it should go through Julie, because that's her job, then we could all see it at the same time. I'm trying to run the meeting, I'm not, I don't have time to try and look up something on board book that you're looking for that was a year ago. I, I'm not gonna be doing that when I'm running the meeting. So therefore, I'm at a disadvantage, because you're looking at a screen that's got information on it that I don't have on my screen at that moment.
But I didn't ask you to look it up, all I did was that-
But you wanna have a discussion about it.
No, I just-
You wanna bring up a point about it, how do I know what you're saying? Because I, I don't have anything to, to speak to from that.
Okay.
If you, if you wanna discuss a comparison, then I think it's appropriate out of respect for everyone here at the table, that we all see it. So we can all talk from the same information.
So how would you like me to do that next time?
I, I guess if you wanted a comparison, I'd go to Julie and say, Julie, I want comparisons of board book, the budget that we talked about last year to the budget we talked about this year. And then it gets a little bit tricky, because then you're giving direction to Julie that the rest of the board may not want.
That we wanna do that.
So I guess you have to ask the rest of the board first, if, do we want that? Do we want that comparison? Do we wanna speak from that comparison? I know you don't like it, but-
No, no, it's not that I don't like it, and I'm just going, okay, you know, I, I did my homework, I looked at it, and sometimes I do it in the meeting, I'm like, wait a minute, something you just said, I have a question, that doesn't, I, I thought, I could've sworn I heard something being said before, so I opened up last month's, you know, report that was given to everybody, and I say, okay, you know, I have a question, because I thought you said this last month or last year this time, and now it's this. You know, I, isn't that what we're all supposed to, are we all supposed to be responsible for reading this stuff? Well, I think we all are reading this stuff.
I think we all do.
So why?
But you're presenting other information at the table that we don't have in front of us.
Well, I'm not presenting anything, I'm asking a question about it once in a while, and if it, if it needs to be discussed, I'm like-
And I don't know what you're talking about, because I'm not seeing it, I don't have it in front of me.
So what you're saying would help the conversation if everybody could see the same comparison. The data will be with the conversation as well.
I mean, and our public's seeing that data too, because it's going out on board, I mean, that's the official, so that's, you know, where we are operating and making our decisions on, is based on the information that comes from administration. And, and, and the one that I think you're talking about, spreadsheet, was the spreadsheet that Julie submitted to the newspaper. The newspaper submitted a spreadsheet that was out there that we did not actually get in our board book, but was in the newspaper. I read the newspaper, and I was reading the current enrollment numbers, and I had a question about it, it was in the newspaper, it was work that she had already done and sent out.
But I didn't have it in front of me.
But that was, and it was also, I don't read the newspaper, so, I mean, I don't. I mean, if that's gonna be a prelude to having a board decision.
It's not a prelude to have a board decision, it was just a prelude for me asking a question.
You've made reference to the fact that you've had your own spreadsheet, I have my own spreadsheet here, and I'm looking at enrollment numbers. And so, like at that point, we're like, I don't know what you're talking about, because I don't have that information in front of me. So to have an educated discussion about it, we can't.
It wasn't my spreadsheet, it was the one that Julie submitted.
Well, we're talking about no, no surprises, right? And so in order for everybody to have, you know, we should all have the same, we talked about knowledge is power, right? So we all want the same information to make a good decision at the board table, because I'm guessing the reason you have it up there is because there's a comparison that concerns you, or is good, or whatever, and so you wanna make sure everybody has that so they can see it too.
Well, in one case, she said something that I could've swore I remembered something else being said earlier, then I wanted to make sure that I got it right. So I looked online at board book and pulled up the previous board book discussing this, and I just went, okay, I'm trying to understand this, because you're on this path, and then all of a sudden it changed, and we're getting information, and I looked it up and read it.
And it is gonna depend on the situation, if it's just looking up a statement, that's one thing, if it's creating a document, something more than that, then it would help probably you getting your point across if everybody had the information in too, so it'd be helpful to you.
Well, and I think there's, and to that point, there's been times where you've requested things, and we've all agreed that that's a good idea. I mean, we've gotten more information, so I mean, it is appreciated, I mean, at times, you know, I just, I would wanna have the same information and have the time to prepare.
Talk about building businesses, we really need to get into a lot of the definition of public data, open meetings, that is in the open meeting law. We have, I'll check to see if it's in here, and I can hand it out to you, that gives you kind of the breakdown, so if you want to-
Yeah.
That'll help, it's good to have, so if you're looking through it, can we, can we close through this? Is this something we can keep talking about, how can we talk about it? Of course, it doesn't, it can't possibly cover all situations, but it, I think it's a good basic, and as we find those, we'll forward them to you. If we can't get them tonight, then we will include them in our summary that we put together here as well. Okay? Um, let's see. Again, I'm sorry, I've written this up here. You guys are gonna study that. Community engagement, we've talked about that, in that we try to get that there, but how can we, you know, look at a better way of doing that? A com, that is a common question issue in all districts, right? So we talked about this, talked about this, we talked about this. Agenda setting, that is gonna be in your policy, so when you review your 200 policies, there will be, it will likely say what, how the agenda is set. And then the superintendent review or evaluation, is that something you do?
Yep.
And do you have a model that you use consistently? Okay. And I think the conversation would be around if that works for your board and for your superintendent. And there's a variety of models out there, we have one, we have one with others.
My question was actually, in, you know, when we do superintendent reviews, we're doing it only from our perspective of the superintendent, and that determines, you know, and with all due respect, are we supposed to, you know, get feedback from anybody or anything else on this, or understand the 360s of the staff and, and all that? Well, you know, we benefit quite a bit from getting those, from getting that feedback as board members, but we're not being evaluated either. So that is something that I didn't know where, you know, where the, where the comparisons or anything like that go. And I do that when I, when I, when I manage my own staff and, you know, at work, I, I get feedback from others to make sure that we're being thorough, because I only see one angle, and that's it.
Right. Well, I'm gonna speak from what I've seen in the past. And so, from us, we do not recommend a 360. What we've found is that is frequently an opportunity for people to complain. Just like at school board meetings, rarely do you have people show up and say, you know what, you guys have been working so hard, right? You are the best, but they show up when? Frustrated, there's something going on?
Right.
And so that's what we see. Now, in the business, that's different, because you pick what, a customer, you know, a coworker, you pick certain people that you hope would give you a better, well-rounded, where if we put it out to staff, that's what it often looks like, is an opportunity to-
And that's what I thought, but I just wanted to know.
And that, we're just, we're just sharing from experience. Now, there is an opportunity for an evaluation for the board to do a self-evaluation as well. That's where you go through and fill it out, and so. Okay. All right. So we are at nine thirty-five, five minutes short of three hours, so, and that's usually what we see for this, this type of discussion. So unless there's anything else, we're gonna look at wrapping things up. And certainly, if any one of you have a question, you can certainly give us a call. What we will do is we'll take pictures of these, erase them, and then we will work on putting a summary together. And we'll get out, get that out to you in the next couple of weeks, it goes to the chair and the superintendent. And then you decide as a board of how you're gonna use it. It would probably be helpful with the two people at work here tonight to help some, at least an individual, help them review it. And then also, you can pick like one or two sections, and maybe talk about it at a board meeting or at a study session, which is still a meeting, but you know, it's more about studying, and so you can use that as a tool to just kind of review things as you go.
It's like on board development kind of?
Yeah, and you don't need us there to do it.
Well, we have two opportunities for sure, one is as we work on the 200 policies, and then we will have a retreat in June. Do we have a date? Or I'm, I'm wondering if we don't have to do the June 22nd study session, if there's no business we have to do, we were looking at possibly seeing that we could use that date.
I'll send you already have.
Yeah, because sometimes we don't need a study session at that time, and I'm just kind of optimistic that we don't have volume changes, and we don't have things happening.
In the next two weeks. Do you need some of that, or?
No, that's good.
In the next two weeks, is usually what we're trying to do.
And we, we did your, like, I think we did their evaluation last year, for the first time, we did the MSB evaluation.
Oh, I thought you were like, you evaluate it.
No, no, self-evaluation for us.
You know, what we found out is what we were doing was very similar to what your evaluation is for the superintendent evaluation.
Well, no, I'm saying our, our-
Self-evaluation?
Okay, I'm still on the superintendent.
Yeah, so we have a, so we have a digital version, yeah, that you go on.
We did the first, we did it once.
Without somebody coming, but we were talking about having somebody come.
Having somebody come to make your comparison.
It's good to do it every year, whether or not you have somebody come or not, because at the point you do want somebody to come, then we have the longitudinal data, you know, over the three years, and we saw this blip, why? And then let's talk about it.
Yeah, so we'll do it again, I think that was the general consensus, and it's just whether we wanna have it analyzed or not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.